Morning everybody and welcome to the council meeting for the fifth of February. Please join with me standing for the opening, Karakiya. Thank you very much. I have apologies for myself, a partial absence today around about quarter past eleven for a wee while. Councillors Gough and Hindstock for lateness and councillor Gough will be on Zoom and Yanni is here. And partial absence for Tim if we go past three thirty. Now if we go past three thirty today, trouble at mill, okay? Right, so I'll move it and Pauline will second it. All those in favour? Yes, carried, thank you. Declarations of interest, councillor Gough and Kewen have declared an interest in item twenty, the draft local alcohol policy report. You don't. So now we'll hear from our com boards for the first time this year and first up is Emma and Simon.
Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. Apologies from Simon, he's stuck at work. It's good to be back reporting to you on what's been happening in our Waipapapapanoi in a central community board area over the past few months. You'll see here we've had a few public forum presentations in December, including an update on the progress of the Te Oraka Community Pools Initiative. This is a really exciting collaboration between a number of local Shirley community groups and the Ministry of Education to get their Shirley intermediate pools back up and running as a community-led and managed facility. They understand the need for the pools to be sustainable and so are working on innovative ways to ensure ongoing operating costs are manageable. Term four last year saw the opening of a new youth space in Northlands Mall, which our board helped fund through our Better Off funding. The collaboration between Papanoi Youth Development Trust and Te Oraho enables youth workers to be based at the space, which is in a vacant retail spot right next to the entrance to the mall. It's on the route that students from Papanoi High School take to get from school through to the bus, the super bus stop on Main North Road and provides a safe space for young people to gather and connect with youth workers and eventually other agencies as well. Travelling to and from the big new retail development at Northlink on Landon's Road got easier towards the end of last year with the new traffic lights at the Greys-Landon intersection being completed ahead of schedule. You've heard us talk before at length about the issues with traffic along this busy corridor in the heart of Papanoi. And although this doesn't solve the problems at the other end of Landon's Road near Northlands, it does make it easier for northbound traffic to exit the area instead of circling back around by the mall. We've had a couple of exciting community celebrations that we as a board were involved in recently with the official opening of Little Poland Park, coinciding with the eightieth anniversary of the children's arrival in New Zealand. And there was a big turnout for the Edgeware Pool sod turning as well. You may have seen in the media last month about the concerns from Shirley residents about the removal of twenty trees in Emmett and Rizal Street, these are massive great big street trees, which need to be dealt with in order to comply with electricity regulations and to address safety concerns. After hearing the concerns of the community, staff attended a meeting with residents, apologised for the communication problems around the planned removals and agreed to delay the work. Our local staff are working closely with the community so that they can help determine what happens to the felled trees and to collaborate on the replanting plan. The end of last year saw us present our board's 2024 Rangatahi Civic Awards at our local schools and you can see a few of them being presented there at Te Aratai College, Parehawa Banks Ave School and Papanoi High. It's been a busy time over the summer with community events in our area and you can see a few of them there. And then finally, last slide, the great collaboration between council's parks team and local communities continues with a few examples pictured there. That's all from us.
Brilliant, thank you. Tyler has a question.
Kilda.
Kilda.
Thank you so much for that and thanks for inviting me to check out the youth space. It was a phenomenal space. I just wanted to just brush over the benefits of having that youth space in Northlands Mall and how you guys got to, got within the partnership that you had with Northlands Mall. Would you be able to just elaborate a bit more on it?
There was some amazing work done by those two local community groups who work with youth. They, Papanoi Youth Development Trust especially, has over the years worked with the mall when there has been issues with students. It's a hub for students. You've got Papanoi High, you've got St Bead's down the road, Marion College there now. You've got students travelling north on buses from St Andrews and from the central city heading north. So it was a really great idea that that collaboration of groups came up with and we as a board were really happy to be able to help support them with that.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I went to the, that Northlands Mall. It was absolutely fantastic. It's a great initiative. So well done.
Are there any other malls that have got that around Christchurch? Do you know? Does anyone know?
Don't know, but they're certainly...
I'm working on record at the moment.
Yeah.
They've grabbed, taken the bull by the horns and they've done a fantastic job for young people to go and just feel...
Yeah, I think Northlands is quite unique in the fact that they reckon there's about five hundred students from Papanoi High School pass through there every afternoon after school. Yeah.
So it's worked very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dook. So we now have Horsey Hornby Ricketon, which is Marie and Helen, please.
Yes, right.
Good morning and happy new year to all. I hope you all had a good break during the holidays like I did, okay? Now, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity of presenting the report of the Waipuna Horsey Hornby Ricketon Community Board for the months of November and December twenty twenty four. Now, for the first part of our presentation, I will just touch on bits of the decisions made by the community board under delegation. I'm sure you all, you have all received our detailed reports, so if you have any questions about anything, I'd appreciate dealing with it at the end of our presentation. First off, so in the last two months, this, the board made decisions on following. So the traffic islands on Ricketon Road, as we all know, the safety improvements at the Church Corner intersection involving Ricketon Road, Main South Road and the Alders Road was quite contentious. I won't go into the detail anymore, but at its meeting on December fourth, the council approved option C and as a result of that decision, the community board was required to make a decision on the removal of the three traffic islands on the south side of Ricketon Road. It is because that the plan that was approved by council did not include the three islands on the south side of Ricketon Road. In any case, the staff report addressed the notice of motion put forth by councillor Peters at the meeting and the board approved the removal of those three traffic islands. I'm not sure if it's still there, it's been removed already? Still there, so in progress. Next one is the granting of the lease of forty-four Canada Crescent in Hornby. This was pretty straightforward. The board has now authorised the manager of property consultancy to finalise the lease and term conditions. The lease terms and conditions, yeah. Next is, as part of the urban forestry planting programme, the board was asked to approve the planting and removal of trees within Quarry View Drainage Reserve. There were mixed community views about the removal of a row of poplar trees. Now, during consultation, almost half of the respondents expressed concern about the removal of the poplar trees and expressed either a desire for the trees to be retained or for the removal to be staggered and to allow the newly planted trees to grow up first. The board considered deputations at the meeting expressing concerns of residents living right next to the row of poplar trees. The main concerns were about the stability of the trees, so safety issues and shading as well. But after much deliberation, the board approved the officer recommendations without change. The Mills Road speed humps was pretty straightforward as well. This was for the replacement of existing rubber speed cushions with asphalt speed humps and this is near the intersection with William Britton Ave and Kern Strive. The rest, I'll just skip through that and so pass on to Helen.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Marie. We've got quite a milestone here in the Upper Ricketon War Memorial Park. The background is that the building was unsafe. I got a call from an engineer ages ago saying the building's unsafe. I had to take it to the board. The board checked it out with in fact an engineer and it was unsafe. The question then is what do we do with that land? And it's a no-brainer really to have it as a park because if we had sold it, it wasn't clear where the money would go. Would it go to us or in fact the Crown? So this is going to be a real enhancement. It's a park and it's a real enhancement for the Upper Ricketon community. Moving on to the Hornby Community Centre Open Day and this is a board priority as was the Upper Ricketon Park. So there was a full, there was a celebration to hand over the ownership to the Hornby Community Care Trust. Ricketon Fun Day, I'll pass briefly over and hand back to in fact Marie. Or I'm doing La Vida and the La Vida Youth Trust had a twenty-year celebration. So they've been there twenty years and doing a lot of good youth work. Thanks, Marie.
Okay, and so we've had a community service and youth service awards the last couple of months. We have presented a total of sixteen awards at twelve events. And then we have, we've had the Horsey Community Garden Open Day and I'm running out of time. We've had the Federal Fund Matatiki Play Space Project was a Matatiki Papa play session to gather community feedback for the development of a new play space through the Federal Fund. And then last, my last presentation, I think I mentioned already the Horsey Quarry Park Run. This is still being held weekly, every Saturday morning with locations all over the world. Now, just lastly, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite all of you to celebrate the vibrant Filipino culture and community at the Philippines Day event on Sunday, February twenty-third, from twelve noon to five PM at Ray Blank Park. It will be filled with amusements and outdoor games, live music, songs and cultural dances, a variety of food stalls serving delicious Filipino cuisine. And who knows, you might even win a raffle prize like the mayor did last year. So please come and, yeah, celebrate with us.
What happens when you buy half a book?
Cool, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Wonderful. Thank you. Looking forward to going to that. Sorry, Yanni, we haven't got any quick time for that one. Next we have Coastal Berwood Linwood, which is Paul and Jackie. Now they, because they've got a number of part A's, they've got ten minutes.
I'd like to start by mentioning a few of the amazing events in the east over the summer period. We had the Wollston Gala, which is the first for several years. We hadn't had any events in Wollston and we had used three years of funding from the board's Better Off Fund. So we've got it coming another two years as well. And we had about a thousand people attending and the gala celebrated all the positive things that Wollston has to offer, which is a lot. And then the Marshland Hall Trust, oops, the days are there. The Marshland Hall Trust again put on an excellent event and and then the Summer Splash twenty-four Christmas Pool Party, which is the last of a series of fresh pool parties held on the thirteenth of December at Tapau Toit Toit, one of the other excellent things in the Wollston area. And we're also celebrating Tapau Orakai Hotu, which is a local Maori integrated special character school. In twenty twenty four, a group of eight year thirteen students submitted an entry for the Zayid Sustainability Prize twenty twenty five. The school found out they were finalists for the award in November, leaving very little time to raise funds. They needed to travel to Abu Dhabi for the ceremony. Being nominated for that award is momentous and recognising this, our community board resolved a group to provide the group a grant of three and a half thousand dollars towards travel costs so that they could attend and they won. Card away. Awesome. And also Jackie recently opened Avon Park, but work is continuing on the lower part of the park and we open in the coming months, starting with the court in January. I don't know if it has been opened. The City to Sea Path Connection, Exploture Trails and Large Swing will be opened around the end of the year with entire park being planted out around the October twenty twenty five. So that's a really awesome bit of work. And now on to some of our issues. Jackie.
Marina, everyone. Portlink, the people lost. It came out just before Christmas that containers cannot be viewed as building and they can now take the container height higher. I think it's a sad indictment on our society that big money can crush people and this is what has happened in this event. The winners tell me that it's very legal what they have done to the people in this community with the containers, their noise, their dust and their disruption to the quiet enjoyment of their homes. Well, it can be legal, but I don't think it's moral. I think it's appalling that people can go in with big money and totally screw over a whole community of people, reducing their property values and reducing the quiet enjoyment of their homes. I think it's very sad that we can just sit here and go, okay, well, that's it and that's pretty much it. Well, this city council, I mean, obviously not you individuals that are around it today, but this city council put a plan in place that made this possible for rich people to hurt people who work hard for a living, who invested in property, who now can't enjoy their homes. That's it.
And we'll continue to work with that Wollston community there and we have a meeting coming up which we'll be discussing this matter again and how we can support them. The other issue we wanted to raise is the Maces Diaries, traffic lights, which we would like to be installed. So St John's Street Bromley runs between Maces and Limwood Ave and has a heavy traffic restriction. But despite this, trucks and off-duty buses use it as a rat run regularly as they do a number of other Bromley streets. So we believe that lights at the intersection, Maces and the state highway, coupled with narrowing of the St John's Maces intersection would make a big difference. So we would like your support, perhaps by writing to NZTA about the lights and then the annual plan for the narrowing of the St John's Maces intersection. We also have a couple of A parts, part A reports. We have the City to Sea East Safety Improvement... Um, we, we have the city to sea, city, the city to sea east safety improvements, Avondale Road Crossing. This is just about safety, um, and it has the added benefit of reducing speed along a key school route to Chisinau, Wood, intermediate and, and Hiata. Uh, and then rocking Horse Road, uh, right away leases, so this is straightforward. Um, although we had to kind of re-decide because it was actually a recommendation to you. Um, and all you are being asked to do is approve the leasing of redundant red zone driveways on the western side of Rocking Horse Road from Godwood Street to Mermaid Place. Uh, to immediate neighbours, uh, the terms and conditions are in the report, it's, it's fairly straightforward. Um, and then we have the Marine Parade, uh, Street Renewal Project. Um, I just, I really want to thank staff for working with us and the community to get an option for this. That is a synthesis of what the community, uh, wanted. Initially, we had two options, uh, that the community was divided on. However, uh, on my request, um, and, uh, to less request, the staff provided a third option. Uh, we workshopped it with stakeholders and the staff consulted on it and the feedback was excellent. Uh, and this is how local government should work. Um, we, we collaboratively with elected members and staff in the community, we worked together for the best outcome we could get. So your support for this will be much appreciated. Uh, and, uh, finally, I just wanted to mention, uh, a topic of mine, the local alcohol policy. Uh, just like to, uh, urge you, uh, to support consulting and completing the local alcohol policy prior to the election. And our board area is the worst affected by alcohol land harm. And that comes disproportionately from off licenses and in the nine P M to twelve A M window.
Okay, Tim, please.
Yeah, um, thank you, just two quick things with the, um, rat running. I know that, um, Kashmir and, um, St. Taurus Road were rat running for trucks trying to dodge the eighteen lights on Brahm Street. But with the traffics, uh, with the safety measures that we've put in for the schools at the roundabouts and along, that's now changed and they're now sticking to the eighteen lights and that's been noticeable. So that they do work no matter what people say and it's safer for the kids, et cetera. The second one with, is with regards to Portlink. The I M A, I mean, let's face it, since Jeffrey Palmer drafted it, has totally changed. It was done centrally for communities and the environment and it certainly, you now have a crow. I think a group of, um, lawyers is called a crow of lawyers on one side and a community on the other. Two things we need from that, I think, is do we need to look harder at our city plan to, to have more of a cushion between community and industrial? Because industrial isn't a bad word because it employs a lot of people and helps the city drive. I'm just wondering from your experience, what you're thinking.
No, absolutely, and, you know, very supportive of putting in a transitional zone around industrial areas. Um, I mean, obviously that's under discussion at the moment and, yeah, we're looking, looking forward to hearing more about it.
Well, thank you very much, cheers.
Yanni, please.
Uh, I was just wondering if staff are maybe able to respond to the Portlink issue, given that it was an interim decision. Declarations or further information was supposed to be provided by the thirty-first of January, um, around what the actual outcomes will be. Are staff in a position to actually update the council over what's happening? Cause we haven't seen what the filings have been and I'm aware that it's in front of the court still.
Um, I can, it's, it's probably best I, um, consider that question a bit further, but I can send out a memo by end of today covering that.
I think, I think that would be useful and can staff also just give an update? Obviously there's been formal council requests to do the plan change. Be able just to give us an update on the timeframe for getting something in place, given that that was in the decision, one of the key, um, issues that the judge highlighted, that we should be trying to fix our city plan rather than deal with.
Yeah, I'll, I'll include that in the memo and there is a briefing coming to the board at, towards the end of February as well.
Thank you, Yanni. Kelly?
Uh, thanks Paul, obviously you have quite a bit of experience and, um, interest in the L A P. Um, just in terms of, uh, on licenses, do you think that they should be included in the L A P at this stage? Or should, do you think we should just focus on off licenses and timings of, uh?
Um, I, I think, well, what you're deciding today is simply to proceed in the development or not. Um, I wouldn't want to conflate those two things, uh, and you should definitely proceed.
Okay. Excellent.
Thanks.
Chris Gold, thank you very much. Okay, banks peninsula, we have Lyn and Penelope, please. And they have ten minutes as well.
Marina, everyone. It's nice to see your faces, it feels like a long time. We've had a good break, actually managed to get one. Okay, today I have the pleasure of telling you all about the exciting happenings around Banks Peninsula since November last year. The Christmas holidays saw an influx of people relaxing, playing and gathering at our Banks Peninsula reserves. You may have even done so yourself. Awesome. Many of these reserves are looked after by our fourteen reserve committees who volunteer their time to maintain and develop the reserves, working alongside our Awesome Parks team. The board also has representatives who attend the irregular meetings and we also receive meeting minutes so that we stay up to date with all the things our reserve committees are doing to enhance and protect these wonderful reserves. And as you can see, we've had a bunch of reserve committee meetings there. Minutes received. Um, as you can see also on the PowerPoint, there is a discretionary response funding of over eighteen thousand dollars granted. Of particular interest to note is, uh, the ten thousand six hundred that went to various Banks Peninsula emergency hubs to finance setup costs and equipment that will be crucial during a natural disaster or the like. It's good to see those hubs doing great work. We approved more storage space for the Birdlings Flat Community Centre to store equipment used in their creative hub. Now this seems like quite a small thing, but it's actually a pretty big thing as it will allow them to use the extra room for health and wellness providers, et cetera, instead of it storing tables and chairs. So that's a real win for the community. There are two Part A reports that you need to hear about. We agreed to council acquiring, sorry, I don't know where I went. We agreed to council acquiring deeds land along the road, stopping the amalgamation at the corner of Harman's and Voila's Road in Littleton. This will tidy up classification and paperwork. After this process is complete, land status will reflect current land occupation. There will be no impact to the community. And we agreed to the revocation of reserve status on a small block of land at Three Bantry Road in Wainui to enable the neighbour to purchase it. One seven seven Purdau Ave. At our meeting on the twenty-eighth of January, after hearing fifteen deputations and reading the three hundred and sixty-four submissions, the board determined that reserve status should be revoked and the land at one seven seven Purdau Ave, known as Purdau Maori Reserve, to be returned to Natifiki. The property is in Urupah or Berrera Site, which was not recognized or protected under this current reserve status and is of historic and cultural significance to Natifiki. It's been over a century getting to this point and I felt honoured to chair the meeting and brought it all, that brought it all together. I'm grateful the board was entrusted with this responsibility to make the decision on behalf of the community. We believe that the return of this land to, um, to Hapo and Natifiki as kaiaki of the Urupah just makes sense and is the right thing to do. It is worth noting that one of the deputations was in Tereo Maori and interpreted by Ross, Ross, uh, Panayora from council's treaty partnership team. Thanks goes to Ross for that, he did a great job. And thanks to staff for supporting this whole process. All right, next page. What we heard from our community is some quick but important things to note. The Little River Trust spoke about the history of the Coronation Library, currently waiting to undergo restoration work and the work the trusts have done to prepare for activation. Keep your ear to the ground for expected progress on this soon. We are nearly there. The Seafarers Centre presented a case to occupy space in the proposed refresh of the Donald Street stables. They were referred to Christ U T Z who are spearheading the project. And I also want to say thanks to the seafarers who do an amazing job over in Littleton with what they do. We agreed to look at refreshing the Littleton Arts Council mural, commemorating the arrival of first European settlers to Littleton in time for the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. And in open forums, we heard an Akaroa resident put forward an interesting case to change the name of Drummond's Jettie to Davis Jettie. You try saying that last ten times. Noting the rich history many of the Davis family had with the Jettie. And happily, the community around Ellendale are excited with the progress to get back into their hall after the board supported the quickest possible repair to Ellendale Hall with the view that a longer term solution may still be obtainable through a long-term plan sometime in the future. I know that they are chuffed. And submissions made. Leading up to the Christmas was a particularly busy time for the board and we made five submissions. Here's just a few that I'm mentioning today. Banks Peninsula was the pilot area for the First Coastal Hazard Adaption Plan, as you are aware. And Asif made a presentation to you here last week on behalf of the community board. We need an adaption plan soon and it is encouraging to see so much public engagement that will continue to guide us. But we need to start somewhere and good luck with that, with that, um, process. It's, um, important. The dog control policy and bylaw was another hot topic with lack of dedicated dog exercise area in Littleton, resulting in the pro, the proposed lifting of leash requirements at the Littleton Recreation Grounds. It's one of the few flat green spaces in the area and we know that dogs need an exercise area. But we hope that the council help us find a suitable alternative as sporting teams regularly have to comb the fields for dog poo prior to games, which is not great. And finally, our last page. In November, our wonderful parks team took the board on a field trip to Tioka Reserve on Banks Peninsula. It was a great day and beautiful part of the world. They told us about their project to reintroduce the endangered mottled petrol to the area. The preparation work they are doing will protect the birds from predators and bad weather. It's very encouraging to see. And lastly, on the right here, the, um, our honourable mayor Phil Major and an army sapper used an axe to cut the cake marking fifty years since the New Zealand Army Royal New Zealand Engineers obtained the Charter of Akaroa. This gives a regiment the right to enter a city fully armed and ready for action with drums, colours, unveiled, swords drawn and bayonets fixed. The occasion was celebrated with a charter parade through Akaroa.
Scary.
This recognizes the very close relationship between the civic authority and the regiment and it was a sight to see.
It's a very sharp axe, I'll tell you that.
Yes. Right, so what a time we've had, thank you for yours, is there any questions?
Yes, we have one from Tyrone, please.
Koa, thank you. Um, thanks Lyn, been very busy. The, now, just regarding the Purdo, um, the Maori Reserve in Purdo, the, um, and I would say I, I don't personally think I'll ever make a more significant decision as a community board member, however long I'm a community board member for. Um, but I understand you've mentioned that one of the submissions was delivered entirely in Tereo. Now my understanding is that the person who did that spoke German as a first language.
Yeah.
And, and yet somehow managed to deliver an entire five-minute deputation entirely in Tereo and answered all questions in Tereo. It was, is that, was that correct?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's my understanding too, that she's from Germany, so. How many minutes?
Ten.
Ten minutes. Ten minute deputation. Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah. And then also Ross translated that. Yep.
Excellent. Okay. Um, I've just got one wee one, is Mr Drummond happy that his name might be coming off his wolf?
I haven't heard from Mr Drummond.
He probably doesn't exist, maybe, I don't know.
I don't know, so the process will see, you know, where that goes, so, you know.
But it is, um, that, that, that's the one that's just been completed, isn't it, outside, um, Oli Haize, is that, is that what? Fantastic job, it's very, very good to see it back.
Yeah, great progress going on over there.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so next we have sprayed cashmere heath kit and just Callum, I think? Alright, yep. Welcome.
Thanks. Yeah, so apologies from Kia, he's still on, still on holiday, lucky fellow. Um, oh, Tenaka Takatua, uh, so just a brief, uh, update from us, um, around some decisions made. Um, so we've, uh, addressed some, some leasing, uh, issues around some of our, uh, existing clubs at Leonard's Park and Mount Pleasant Tennis Club. We've renewed a few leases there. And, uh, yeah, approved a new pavilion and cricket net relocation for Leonard's Park as well. Um, we've also been busy with Craft, uh, with, uh, renewals taking place on Sefton, uh, Sefton Place and Norwood Street Fisher Ave intersection in Beckenham. Um, and we're really excited about a new pump track, uh, relo, uh, that's sort of been relocated and upgraded in the Ferrymead Park. Uh, in terms of our D R F, we have, uh, we've gifted out a number of, uh, uh, sort of parcels of funding to different groups, some which I'll address later. Uh, one that we're particularly excited about is the, um, is the new hoop at, uh, the, uh, adding, uh, Cornelia's Oconna Reserve, not, not Addington Park, thank you. I'll just jump forward, oh, no, that's the timer. Hold on, push that. But, uh, so we have a Part A coming to you today around decommissioning some artwork. Um, it was just, yeah, it's, we think it's, it's fairly straightforward in terms of, um, process and, um, we'll be decommissioning the art and returning it to the family. It's, simply put, just a safety issue. Um, it's, uh, they, they, they didn't come out of the tree policy. Um, they are in fact made of iron, so they're not real trees. So it had to go through a bit of a different process than that, but, yeah, we, we recommend that the council approves the, uh, report coming through, through to you today. Um, community service awards, um, so we had a wonderful community service awards in November last year. Um, you can see the photo there on the top. Um, and that picture there on the right of the half basketball court, Cornelia's Oconna Reserve, um, that's been a real success, an example of, um, massive, uh, yeah, I guess, uh, sort of goodwill and cooperation between the community council staff, um, in terms of getting a result, uh, getting a hoop installed in such a short period of time. Um, some of the kids you can see, uh, in that photo, uh, came to present to the board initially to request that hoop. And it's really important because it's an area where, although as the crow flies, it's quite close to some other hoops. It's actually separated by a huge, um, you know, Brahm Street, uh, and Morehouse Ave, those are really big, um, heavy, heavy traffic roads. So, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a much more accessible location for a community with lots of kids. Um, so, yeah, we, we expect that to get a huge amount of use. And activate an area that, um, that isn't really used by, um, by, by too many teenagers at the moment. We also had the Summer Skate Park and Village Green opening, uh, last year, which is a super special event for a, um, fantastic, uh, yeah, area for, for the whole community to enjoy. And you can see some, some great photos of the event there. And as Ross here might have some other, uh, other comments to make about that as well, it was a great, a great time. Um, and then I guess another, another few sort of updates from our board, um, is the South Library, um, is, is all scaffolded up now, so, um, the, yeah, that, that project's continuing, um, on track. Um, and with the new, with the new, uh, pop-up location and, and the Colombo Mall, um, as well opening. Um, the other thing as well that our board's got an interest in at the moment is the Port Hills Plan. So we had a conversation with staff in last year around, uh, it's, it's more of a vision, uh, document really than a, than a kind of operational plan. Um, it'll be, uh, covering the port hills, uh, and integrated with the existing operational and management plans there as well. But we're really in the early stages now of engaging with the community around what that should look like. So, um, staff have, are in the process of reaching out to different groups, um, all, all across the hills, um, and, including landowners as well. Um, and to sort of, yeah, get an understanding of what it is, what, what the vision for that, that part of our city should be. Yeah. So that's all from us today.
Thank you, um, we've got time for one question, sorry, Andre, you had to hand it first. And he's bigger than you? Okay, Tyler?
Uh, mine's just towards staff, thanks so much for that, guys. Uh, it's around the costings for that park, Cornelia's Oconna Reserve and, um, seeing if you'd be better to send me an email.
Cheers. Um, it should be noted that the, 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 the reserve wasn't used for many years because of safety concerns from parents. We rebuilt Manuka Cottage there, which has changed that whole environment. And now that it is a focus for the young people and families in that area. And it's a pretty hard area, but it's absolutely fantastic to see this. And that's been driven by the board, which is a total change. Yeah, it's great.
Good work, thank you, thanks very much, coming in. Okay, last but certainly not least is, um, Jason. Okay, last but certainly not least is um Jason and Mary Anne for Fendleton Wa玛riherwood. Thank you. And I, I didn't write this bit.
A poor substitute for Mary.
Good morning, everybody. So first up for us were some decisions made under delegation. Just quickly run through those. Approval of the McLean's Grassland Park Reserve Management Plan. Some landscape plan for native forests and walkways in the east part of Belfast Cemetery. Athletic facilities at Fendleton Park for the U C Athletics Club. Some no stopping restrictions and some discretionary response funding applications. At our December meeting, we had a great presentation from Alan Ho, who is the manager of the Asian Community Transformation Trust. The trust was established in twenty twenty one and focuses on addressing the needs of Asian immigrants in Christchurch, primarily in mental health and holistic wellbeing. They serve residents across the city with a significant presence in Avonhead, Burnside, Wiggrem and Hawsall. Alan pointed out to us that the Asian population in Christchurch has increased by thirty percent since twenty eighteen. The main, main challenges faced by this demographic include accessing services, mental health stigma, language barriers and cultural isolation. Some of the services they provide include seminars and courses on mental health, family dynamics and parenting. The design of tailored training and supervision for, for service providers working with Asian clients. Interpretation services and cultural workshops for teachers. The trust's service users and volunteer bases tripled in just one year and they are currently working with approximately fifteen hundred people and have over a hundred and fifty volunteers. The first edition of the Avonhead Rusley Community Directory has been completed. This directory highlights local services, activities, groups and sports clubs, providing a valuable resource for both new and long term residents. A hard copy has been delivered to nearly seven thousand homes in the Avonhead and Rusley area. And an electronic version is available, which has been shared through local schools, community groups and sports clubs. The directory was produced by the newly formed Avonhead Rusley Community Network, made up of a number of local groups. Compiling the directory has provided some key insights, including potential gaps and overlaps in community services. And provides a great opportunity to look at possible areas for collaboration and the delivery of new services to meet community needs. We have received great feedback from residents with a number of them stating they have lived in the area their whole lives and had no idea the services and activities, no idea of the services and activities available. A huge thanks to all the volunteers who helped make this project happen, particularly Daniel Price, who created the logo and designed the directory. And Petra Shepherd from the Avonhead Community Trust, who did a huge amount of work behind the scenes. I thank you also to the other funders and sponsors who joined with our board to support this project. It was another wonderful turnout for Celebrate Bishopdale and the Bishopdale Skate Jam in November. It was great to have so many fantastic organisations, groups and schools that are part of the vibrant Bishopdale community involved in our event. From the energetic and colourful performances on the stage to the appetising food stalls and a variety of activities for the kids, there was something there for everybody to enjoy. It was a special year for the event as we also celebrated the fiftieth anniversary of the Elephant Slide, which was built in the nineteen seventies. Melanie Costa, a local author, read from her new children's book. Called Elephant Park at the event. The book has now won Storyline Notable Book Award. Proudly supported by the Fendleton Herwood Wa玛ri Community Board, this fun family community event continues to attract the local community who are excited to support and see what is happening in their home community. A big thank you to all our staff and volunteers assisted to make this event great. On the twenty eighth of November twenty twenty four, around thirty five people gathered at St Aidan's in Brindler for the Fendleton Wa玛riherwood Community Liaison's Thank You Breakfast. This event brought together community board reps, the local M P and leaders and workers from our local community groups and organisations. Supported by the community board, the breakfast recognised the remarkable contributions of those serving our local community. Guests enjoyed a relaxing morning with a lively game of human bingo, a delicious breakfast spread, a festive Christmas quiz and time to connect with others. Bridget Williams, our deputy chair, offered a warm thank you to everyone for their dedication and the positive impact they have on our area. A special thanks go to St Aidan's Church for their generosity as hosts and our local community governance team for organising the event and preparing and serving the amazing breakfast. Thank you very much.
That's absolutely brilliant. Thank you very much and good to see you, Mary Anne. Right, I'm more than happy. Thank you to our comp boards and it's uh it's good to see them back for the start of the year. Although I'll move it and Pauline will second it to receive their monthly reports. All those in favour? Against, thank you, that's carried. We have no public forums or petitions today, but before we get on to one, the one deputation we've got. I don't know if you've seen the front page of Loer Paper. Hear that? Something we all knew anyway. But the, the little bit that I've highlighted and I'm having trouble to read. Conf- confidence in Christchurch City Council was at thirty eight percent, higher than the average of thirty. And more than the twenty nine percent it was in twenty twenty two. So this is good news for everyone. Yoo-hoo. Okie dokie. Right, so now deputation, uh ten minutes, we've got Brody Mara Stevenson. Community Action on Youth and Drugs regarding item twenty. Now, we've got to be careful. Note, this, this presentation and any questions from councillors should focus on the timeline. As there will be consultation and hearings process for feedback as uh in the content of the L A P. Hello.
Kia ora, sorry, this is my first one of these, so I'm a little nervous. Um my name's Brody. I work for uh St John of God Hora Trust, but under the contract uh Community Action on Youth and Drugs, which is the national contract in twenty sites around the country. Aiming at reducing and preventing drug and alcohol harm, especially when it affects youth. Um as a young person who grew up in this city not that long ago. Uh I'm pretty aware of the negative effects of alcohol harm in our community. Fairly inspiring to the mahi that I do, the effects I've seen both on whano, friends and the wider community. Um and also as a resident of New Brighton, I can see the harms of an underregulated liquor market on a daily basis. It's pretty much impossible to walk a hundred metres away from my house and not see like direct evidence of alcohol harm. Uh the off licences in my area are honestly run by decent people. It's the harm that comes with the current model of uh the sale and supply of liquor. Uh that creates innate harm, not. I don't think there's necessary, necessarily a lot of ill will. Um industry often uses the personal responsibility argument. Uh but at the same time, uses an argument about market fairness. Uh they're aware that there are practices that they could adopt, which would have a positive impact on overall alcohol harm. But refuse to, because they're nervous competitors won't adopt the same practices. Uh I spend a lot of my time in hearings with the D L C. Going over the same little uh variations to licences, on off licences, having the same arguments over and over again with the same evidence. But it's, it's, it's a slog and it's the same slog. And it's the same pushback because there's money to be made and. Clearly, although they're spending a lot on lawyers, there's more money to be made than the money that they're spending on the lawyers. Um. Sorry. The personal responsibility argument just doesn't really work when you've got a city the size of ours. Um the efforts that it would take to educate or socially engineer. Uh the, the kind of outcomes that you want around alcohol harm with a population our size is. It, that's a lot of work regulating the kind of. Handful of uh organisations, franchises that operate off licences within Ortautahi is a much simpler means of addressing the same problem. Uh the last L A P was shut down by the appeals of a hospitality sector that was still recovering from the damage of the earthquakes. And while they're still pushing against local alcohol policies here and in other areas where they're being considered. Uh the hospitality industry stands to benefit from an L A P not being negatively affected, in my opinion. Uh an application for a new off licence bottle store is currently with council to put a bottle low right across the road from the bus exchange, which. Uh yep, um the fact that it's even be able to be applied for under the current regulations that we have around alcohol is ludicrous. Um that there's, there's just so many areas of potential community harm in that space. Um. My role is not just Community Action on Youth and Alcohol, it's Community Action on Youth and Drugs. But as I'm saying, a, a huge amount of my time is spent addressing alcohol harm. And that, that's because it is just the, the biggest behemoth of an issue that we have in the city. And I would love if there was regulation that meant that I could address some of the other issues that are going on in my role. Uh rather than, you know, just, just repeatedly doing the same stuff. Um across the board, there's, it almost appears that there's consensus that there needs to be an L A P to like lift the floor. Standardised conditions, industry wants standardised conditions as well, even if they push back against it. Um provide regulatory certainty and reduce harm. To delay the process of this policy. Is kind of an argument to just delay making a decision rather than actually. A, a, and a decision to continue to allow harm to continue. While the L A P is put on hold. Um. I am very grateful to all of you sitting here who want to address alcohol harm in the community. Uh I'm sure you all see it and have been affected by it at some point. I think it's hard to live in this country and in this city especially. Uh and not have been affected in some way or another by alcohol harm, whether it's you individually or your whano. Or young people in your community that you represent. It's everywhere, it's massive and this, this policy progressing is a sincere means of addressing some of those concerns. Um and, and again, you're, you're not deciding on the content of the L A P. You're deciding to give the public a say and so that you can decide on measures to reduce harm. Which best fits evidence and best fits the community that you represent here in this room. Um and I just want to repeat the recommended, recommendations of the staff from the L A P report. That the council confirmed its intent to consider adoption of the final version of a local alcohol policy before the local elections in October twenty five. And request staff to progress work accordingly and resolve that all decision making on matters related to alcohol policy. Local alcohol policy sit with the full council with the mayor as chair. Um I'm going to stop there, but uh time for questions if anyone's got questions about my stance on it.
Yep, have Timothy, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You've done very well for your first time, so hopefully it won't be your last. Um are you, is your organisation aware of the um weaknesses in legislation? So for instance, one can operate in Christchurch but have online, this is on, which is kind of out of the scope. But it's really important when it comes to the weaknesses in legislation over this. So but you can hold a liquor licence anywhere in New Zealand, so it could be North Cape, could be Bluff, whatever. But operate in Christchurch. Do, do, what's your organisation's for online? What's your organisation's thoughts on that?
I'm aware, uh well, again, not my organisation necessarily, but the contract that I'm on that's held nationally. Uh operate at both the grassroots level, the, this sort of level lobbying to, to. Community boards and to, to uh sorry, to councils and to, to regional councils to address harm. But also operate at higher levels trying to address harm at the legislative level. Um again, I mean, that, that's, it, it's clearly an issue. It, it's an issue that none of us in this room have any control over, unfortunately.
Well, kind of we do because we can all, we can all lobby central government.
And we should.
Every rule we have is from Wellington.
Log into a, a liquor store local to use website and order alcohol and you're not ordering from that liquor store. You're ordering from a licence held somewhere else in the country that's under different.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not great. Yeah.
Thank you.
All good.
Celeste, please. Be there it.
Well done. I know it's not easy standing in your seat and it is tough, but you did a great job. Um so I'm aware that Waipuna and the community um Action on Youth and Drugs is based. Um they work with a lot of young families and particularly men that have been through the justice system.
Yeah, we have a lot of reintegration programmes and things running throughout.
Yep. So in your view, is alcohol a factor in their lives? And if so, what kinds of licences um of the, a source of the most harm?
I, I think you'd struggle to find many people who haven't been through the system uh in the same way that those boys have. That haven't either had direct alcohol harm in terms of alcoholism themselves or alcohol abuse at a young age themselves. Or parental alcohol abuse leading to domestic violence or uh other forms of abuse in their home. Alcohol is a massive factor on almost everyone who comes through outdoor, whether it's direct or indirect. Sorry, what was the second half of your question?
Sorry, and um that was in relation to what type of licences do you think are the source of a lot of that harm?
The licences that are largely, the, on licences uh in a controlled area under. The, the stewardship of hopefully well trained duty managers and staff. Uh from my uh both experience and knowledge, off licences uh. Don't have the same duty of care to the people that they serve alcohol to. They are often located in areas that are. Well, I mean statistically, they're not located in low socio economic areas, but that's uh. They, they operate heavily, they, they, they make a lot of money in areas that are low socio economic areas. Um which is ver- vastly different to the kind of income flows in on licences. Uh I'm far more concerned about off licences. Especially when you have a large cluster in proximity to, to small suburban retail areas and things like that.
Thank, thank you, Brody. You're gobbling up time flat out, but that's, you put your point across and thank you very much for coming on. It's good.
Legend, thank you.
Okie dokie. So well now of, yeah, I'll move it and I'm going to step out and limit here and try and do all of these minutes, five, six, seven, twenty eight, eight, nine.
Jake's settled, seconded.
Take second, oh good, okay. All of those, so I'll put all of those, all those in favour. Alright, against, thank you, that's carried, brilliant. Yeah, the part A reports. Yep, so number fourteen, please.
Uh good morning. Um I had a few notes about the history of Marine Parade, but I think Paul's covered those off, so I'll avoid those. Um two points I will make. Um one, this project is fully funded from Craft, the Christchurch Regeneration Acceleration Funding, so that's uh the source of money for this. Um and the second point is this was approved by the board on the ninth of December. So the only bits that council is approving are the um two way cycleway and the shared path on the eastern side of Marine Parade. Um and I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, it's moved by Celeste and seconded by Kelly. Okay, um I've just got one question. Um option, just, and, and you may have said this and sorry, I was busy just. Um the option C was one point six million dollars more roughly.
Than one of the options. So, so there were two options originally. Um one was sort of fourish, one was sort of four and a halfish.
But all of the one point six extra is being used out of Craft money, so.
It's all coming out of Craft money, yes.
Sorry, you may have said that.
So there's, there's still a little bit of money left in that Craft programme. Um which we can look at how we use once we've tendered it and we know exactly how much this is costing.
So we've got a mover and seconder as in, do we do debate? Your question, yeah, yeah.
Do the wards have different?
That's out of the um New Brighton suburb, because it's suburban related, so this is the, this is the eastern, New Brighton related.
You can't, you can't make it. So we're, we're now in debate. Okay, is that right? So Ce- Celeste, do you want to go first?
Well, I just want to.
Well, I just wanna start by sort of acknowledging that, um, transport projects, as we know, aren't always the easiest. And we've been on a bit of a journey with this one, so, um, I think it's important to kind of celebrate. Sometimes the successes and I think this is a good example of a really successful project. Um, we often hear about working with community and not doing things to community and that's a constant refrain, particularly in the eastern suburbs. And I think this project in particular is a, an exemplar of what works well when you work with community. And that was reflected through the feedback that we received. So option C was developed in response to the initial consultation. Um, and that went out and we got feedback on that and what the board, um, understood. Was that we hadn't quite landed on the right option, so we asked staff and, um, worked well together to. Um, request to put out a third option, option C. And as part of that option C, we worked closely with the community, so we workshop where we wanted to go with that. And perhaps where we hadn't landed on quite the right option. Um, and the community had made it clear through the initial consultation that they, was a mix of things that they wanted. Which was a mix of improvements for safety in cyclists alongside retaining, um, as much on-street parking as possible. Whilst also upgrading the road, it's quite a lot of things actually, but option C. Did a great job of synthesising that feedback and coming back with a really practical option that, um, reflected the majority of views. So that proposal that came back to the community board received almost eighty-nine percent support, which is pretty amazing. We also had a number of submissions from community organisations and all of those community organisations supported it, local community organisations. We also heard from, um, advocacy groups and the A A, both of which supported it. Um, and what that showed was that by working with community and actually listening and coming back with something new. Um, we got to a really good place. Um, so. The key features of the designers you see are about creating a shared pathway for walkers and cyclists, upgrading the road surface. On a really critical, um, stretch of the road, additional landscaping and safer pedestrian crossings. Um, I also wanna take the time to thank staff, I think the fact that staff, the community board and the community work so well together on this project is. Really something to be commended. Um, I'd like to finish by just, um, sharing some words that I was sent by a member of the community. That was, um, closely involved in this project because it was a very community-led project. So Esther Periam, a long-time New Brighton resident, a business owner, owner who lives on the stretch of road that will be upgraded, had this to say. She said, option C was created by staff who took the opportunity to learn from information gathered during the initial consultation. They really listened and considered the many viewpoints and opinions offered. Most of all, they tried to find wins for everyone. Option C is better for walkers, cyclists, parents pushing prams, people who might have mobility challenges, people who drive cars, people who live here. And people who visit here, of course, not everyone got what they wanted, but every, everyone got something. Um, and her wish is that this is the, only the beginning of our plans to develop the foreshore area. It builds on the investment made in the playground, the pier, the library and Waipuna Taiwana. It recognises that other individuals or businesses are making investments in New Brighton. And this option provides a better, safer, more attractive roadway which will enhance this area in the future. So I just wanna finish with that, thank you.
Thank you, Jake, um, did you have your hand up? Yep, far away, please.
Um, yeah, look, I'm, I'm really pleased to support this, um, I've been watching it for a long time. Um, when I started out in council as chair of the community board, uh, five years ago. Um, this project first came to us. Um, I feel like it's, it shows how we've evolved as a council, particularly, uh, with consultation. Um, the staff, uh, have been brilliant over this and, and come with good options and the consultation. Has been, uh, amongst the best I've seen for something, uh, in, in the New Brighton area. Um, I think C is a good option, it certainly makes sense. Um, I, I think initially some of the community were horrified at the loss of potentially, potential loss of a hundred and two parks. Uh, but I think they came to a, um, a really good sort of sensible solution. Um, the history is interesting, when we, when this craft money came to us, um. Current mayor was the city councillor for, uh, Burwood at the time. Um, we were given this pot of money and a suggestion that we look at. Um, doing stuff that was already on the, um, transport team's radar, upgrades of various streets. And in hindsight, I kind of wished we had gone with that, but we were given the opportunity. Um, to make that decision and we looked at all sorts of things like, um, improving New Brighton Road and found out that that. Uh, wasn't possible with where we wanted to do it. Um, and so this was, I guess is, is, um, upgrading Marine Parade was something that we were, uh, really keen to see happen. Uh, down the track, uh, so I'm really pleased that we've got to this stage, uh, it's not perfect, but, um. It's, it's a darn sight better than it would have been and a lot of that has come down to the fact that staff listened really carefully to the consultation. And came up with a, uh, a good solution, so it'll be good to close this off and, uh, and, and see the changes in New Brighton. And hopefully we can work towards, uh, the rest of the road down to the Waamari, uh, beach club, so happy to support this today.
Yanni, please.
Oh yeah, thank you, um, yeah, I'm really happy to support, um, this, this option. And I think this, this should really, hopefully can be, uh, a role model and a really good learning moment for council. To, to look at how we do things, particularly where you do have, uh, some contention and some controversy. But to actually spend the time working and engaging and having a, um, iterative design process with the local community with council staff and elected members. You can actually get really good results, so I hope that we can look at the lessons from this and what's worked really well. And apply them to some of the other more contentious projects like Wheels to Wings, like the Tialetai Cycleway for example. And try and work and understand how we can balance the needs of so many different people in a community and come up with a result. That is overwhelmingly supported, right? I think we all benefit when we get, when we get that, rather than having a win-lose, we get a win-win. Um, it, it was Martin Luther King, uh, Day not too long ago, I just wanna start, I have a dream. I have a dream that we have fantastic coastal pathways in our city. As someone who was involved and, and, and really supportive from the start of the coastal pathway, uh, through, through, from Sumda back into Ferrymead. Um, I see the same opportunity in, in Brighton, right? We've got an amazing asset in terms of our natural environment. And the opportunity to have a dream of having a really good pathway, the length of, uh, the road along the coast. I think will do wonders for not just the local community, but actually for the city. So if we have a really cool network of paths, uh, that, that enable people to cycle, to walk, to be active. And to enjoy our natural environment and come into our local communities connected from neighbouring communities and into the central city. Then I think we're all better off a- as a result and I'm, I'm glad that we're the happiest city in New Zealand, I think, so that's, that's good news and. And things like this help contribute to that, so I'm really supportive of it, I do wanna commend the staff, which I'm sure this has been. You know, a very time-consuming pro- process and project for them, but I think ultimately we got to a really good outcome. And I'm really happy to support it and I have a dream that we can look at other stages along the same corridor to really make the most of this wonderful opportunity.
Okey doke, right, thank you everybody, so we've got, uh, Aaron?
I'll just quickly say I have a dream that we'll one day be able to afford Yanni's dreams and we can all be happy.
Right, moving, moving right along, so I'll put that motion, all those in favour? Against, thank you, that's carried, so now we're going to number fifteen. The, uh, City to Sea East Safety Improvements on Avondale Road Crossing, please. Morning.
My name's Sam Morrison, I'm the project manager for this project, so we presented to the community board at the end of last year. Just to go over the Avondale Road Crossing and what this is seeking approval for is the on-off ramps as part of the road crossing. Um, so this is a road crossing on Avondale Road, it's part of the City to Sea East Pathway. Currently there's nothing there, so people are just jaywalking, so this is, um, to provide a safe crossing point for the City to Sea Pathway.
Is it?
That's it.
And Jake's, uh, um, Sarah's moving and Jake is seconding, is there any questions? Carol?
Yeah, just in the addition of these, um, speed courses, did?
Yes.
Yeah, how successful have they been at the Dalling, at the Gayhurst Road intersection?
They've only been installed for about a month now, so it's probably a little bit early to tell.
Yeah, do you have any, have you had any feedback at all?
We have had a mixture of feedback, um, speed humps, people either really love them or they don't like them at all. Um, so we've heard a mixture of feedback, generally from users of the City to Sea Pathway, it's positive. And generally from vehicles, um, we can see some negative comments when it comes to that, yeah.
Yeah, so cyclists are feeling a bit safer as they're crossing there?
Yeah, yeah, so the pathway for western section has been open over summer and that includes three road crossings which have been installed. Um, and we've had really positive feedback about the pathway so far and people are appreciating the, the safe element of the crossings.
Okay, thanks, Sam.
Okay, thanks, um, I'm just, yeah, thank you, so just, you said at the start, what, and I should know this. We, just for everyone else, we're voting on just the humps, because the whole thing is, just clarify that for people listening on.
Yeah, yeah, of course, so the humps were approved as part of the community board, um.
Were?
Were, yes, correct, and then this.
Yelling at me.
And then this report is to do with the on-off ramps, so the on-off ramps are technically a new cycle lane, so that's why it goes to council.
So that's on the, on the, um, the plan.
Yeah, yeah, so it's essentially for people that are using the City to Sea Pathway to be able to come off. Um, off the pathway and then get onto Avondale Road as opposed to turning on the crossing.
Yeah, I'm with you, and the crossing itself, the pedestrian bit and the cycleway bit is not raised.
It is a flush crossing.
That's what I see on the bottom of the plan, just making sure. Okay, so the, the speed humps are in, but we're just voting on the access to it, more or less.
Correct.
Right, okay, good, thank you, um, so we've got a mover and seconder, everyone, all those in favour? Right, against, thank, Aaron?
Awesome, thanks everyone.
Thank you, carried, now, the next one is so simple, we won't even have to get staff to come up, not done preempting anything, I'll, I'll move it. And. Mark will second it. Is there any que- this is, this is just tidying up loose ends, so I'll put that motion, if everyone's happy, all those in favour? Right, against, thanks, that's carried. And probably try the same thing with number seventeen. Is that you?
Sorry, do we have, do we currently have an approved process for use of red zone land? Because we've been struggling in the Port Hills areas where people are wanting to use, but, no, no, the one beforehand, like that we weren't allowed any time. Like old driveways and bits and pieces in that one, like, it's just one of those, we're just waiting for. There's a lot of people who want to be able to access bits of red zone land, staff have delegation up to ten years, above that's us.
From what I understand, it's, it's just being sold to the people on each side. Okay, Dave, tell us. Go on, go on, go on.
Uh, morning everyone, um, so, yes, the, the way that you've described it is the current process, so, um, staff have got delegation up to ten years. There's a, a process where people can apply through the portal, um, it then can go up on, online for feedback from the community. Uh, and then that, uh, generates assessment and a report, um, saying whether or not it gets granted. Um, and then depending on the tenure, if it's up to ten years, that's a staff delegation beyond that goes back to council.
So we've just had multiple ones in the Port Hills where people have said to council, would like use of this land, those kind of things. And they've been told there's no process.
Uh, no, there's definitely a process, there's a process established by council, which is, um, yeah, it's, it's got quite clear, um, guidelines around it. Um, so it's not just, it's not just the tenure, it also has, uh, aspects around. Um, it, it's only a staff delegation if you don't compromise public access, um, and if it's not deemed to be. Sort of, uh, significant in, in, in the sense of sort of creating controversy, things like that.
Yeah.
So if it, if it falls, um, outside of those, then it will come back to council. Um, but if it complies with that, then it's a staff delegation, so there is a process.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
So is, is, if there's some concern, we can remind the relevant staff about that if you think that people have been advised something different.
We'll talk to you outside. Making sure that when, when residents do contact staff and, because what they think might be available might not be that staff are able to say, well, actually, we could give you a thirty-five year lease. And you could build a driveway or you could get access for whatever, without, yeah, yeah, it's just, yeah.
The Port Hills is tricky because of the life risks, so, um, we do have to be really careful around that.
Generally just about access though, like there are people with currently no access and those kind of things who are wanting some access and.
So, just to clarify, you mentioned the word buy and it sounds like, uh, those.
Access, it could be access, but sometimes people want to buy and they're just like, oh no, no. But they're not told, oh, actually, but you could just lease it for a dollar for thirty-five years.
Yeah, alright.
Which would probably be really helpful for them.
In, in those circumstances, we can reinforce those messages, but when it's buy.
Your buy is different.
That falls outside of the policy and the process.
For most of those people, like a thirty-five year lease would be fine, yeah.
Especially if you're seventy. Um, okay, we'll, we'll rip on to number seventeen, um, and Tyrone, did, well, you have, yeah, you did, and Tim is happy to second it. Have we got any que- because I'm not gonna rush it this time, have we got any questions of staff who aren't actually sitting there yet? I think it's fairly clear to see, you're happy, any, yeah, do you wanna talk to it?
It's the absolute definition of a no-brainer, you're worshiped.
Righto, no-brainer, I'll put the no-brainer to the vote, all those in favour? Right, against, thank you, that's carried. Now whilst we're continuing with, um, no-brainers in your area, Tyrone. Is the next one the same?
Absolutely, I'll move that as well and that's in the no-brainer camp as well.
And Tim will second it, okay, right, I'll put that one, all those in favour? Right, against, thank you, that's carried. Now we're up to number nineteen, Disley, Disreilly Reserve Art Features Decommissioning Report. Right, uh, uh, okay, um, Mal said we'll move it and Tim will second it, that's in your area. Yeah, yeah, far away.
Probably for the councillors, um. Is, did the board discuss sending a, a thank you message to the family for the artworks? Would, would it be quite good for it to come from council perhaps? With the will of the committee, um, would you consider that Phil to write a letter to the family thanking them for the artworks? How long have they been there? Ten years? Was it pretty quick? Yep.
How, does, how long have they actually been there?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years, oh shit, yeah.
They're pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Lot of work.
Yes, but a, a letter of thanks because they've been really nice for the city to have them there.
Okay, Andre, you've got a question?
So could we just put a noting, um, thing in the resolution?
Can do, yeah, yeah, definitely. Andre?
Thank you, I just wanna go, all of them needing to be removed, was it considered to leave some because some aren't near the footpath?
Yes, the staff.
Yeah.
That's the one.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Um, but the artwork has been there seventeen years, it has a life of fifteen to twenty years when it was placed in there. Um, it has been fully assessed by an engineer and we've monitored it. And then the engineer has subsequently recommended, we remove it all due to the corrosion through all the pieces of the artwork.
Okay, so that answers that, um. Yeah, here we, yep, far away, man.
Um, yeah, so the, the artist has passed away and the, the family have actually requested the artworks to be shared among the family members, is, is that right?
Yes, as part of the process, we are required to notify either the artist or their estate. If we're going to alter or do anything with an artwork, which we've done. And the family expressed a desire to have it returned to them and they're going to, they're looking to distribute it amongst members of the family.
Thank you. Samuel?
That's probably more a question for, um, either legal, so you've got great paper, all good, um, happy with it, it's either for the chief exec or the legal team, it's just. A, a lot of this stuff is very, um, like, why does it need to come to council? So the, so I think about it something like this, the community board have worked through it. Um, and I just wonder whether, like, you know, we, we are duplicating things when it could have just been resolved. I mean, to me, this is like the ultimate local decision that could be made, um. I don't know if others have got thoughts on that, but it, it just to me seems like something we should have a.
What are you saying, is there something that triggers it to come to us?
Yeah, and I don't know if someone could, maybe.
It would, it would be good to get, if people are comfortable, others are comfortable with it too, we can then, uh, just check our delegation.
What do other people think? Is it sort of?
Yep, yep.
It's one of those things that perhaps we could review in the future, so how, what, what comes to why they come to us and if there's no re- let's, let's change the rules.
We were supposed to have a delegations review, a review of the community board. We were supposed to have a delegations review, a review of the community board memorandums of understanding at the beginning of this term. But that hasn't happened.
Looks like the staff member. Right, okay, so we're going to, are we, where are we, so we, uh, so what are we?
Generally happy and we'll look at the delegation that's been sent.
It would be good to know why it did come in the first place before, um, I know if I'm happy, you know?
Yeah. It, it, it comes to council decision because there's no delegation on decommissioning artworks. It's not assigned to anyone. Plus, in this particular case, the decision is outside of our asset disposal process. And that, in essence, it should be go, it could go to market or go be disposed of. But in this case, it's going to the family, so that's not in our process.
Yes, and I'll certainly write a letter to them. Thank you.
The, the, the only caveat is that, um, in this case, it's fine, there's a gap and it comes to council. But in the CBD where we have lots of, if a similar situation was to happen, it may not be appropriate for a community board to be deciding on a big, high price art.
Yeah. And it might be just, I guess it just comes back to those kind of, just having some options that we can look at that kind of go, does this make sense? Does it not make sense? Because I agree, there'll be things that don't, but I looked at this one when I read it and went, you know, really? Like, this is the ultimate local decision. So, um, yeah, so I don't know whether the lawyers, is that sort of?
No, I, I think the position's been adequately summarised already. We're happy to look at it and bring something back in later day.
All righty, so we've got a mover and a seconder. I'll, this is number nineteen, we're looking at, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'll put that motion, all those in favour? Aye against? Thank you, that's carried. We will now have a twenty minute break. Thank you.
So we'll move on to item twenty, the local alcohol policy. This is an update from staff and they'll provide us with the next steps. Well, we'll actually advise them on the next steps, probably the way we're working. Welcome.
Gioricoto.
Good morning. So this report provides an update on the issues and options related to a local alcohol policy and seeks council decision on the timeline for work on an LAP. In November, council resolved to confirm the timeframes for this work when staff reported back on the issues and options. This report attaches the issues and options paper that staff have developed following a significant work identifying in accessing data and research for analysis, undertaking engagement with key stakeholders, including those required under the Sale and Supply for Alcohol Act. The research report and the engagement report, which are attached to the council report, summarise the findings of this work to date. The council meeting today also follows the information session presentation last week on the issues and options. The report recommends that the council makes a decision on the timeline for this work and a decision on undertaking early engagement to inform the development of a draft LAP. It is important that a decision is made at this stage so that council staff can plan a resource work accordingly, particularly regarding to the community engagement and future consultation, and it will also provide the community with clarity about the process ahead. The report provides council with three timeline options. All options maintain a proper process and none reduce opportunities for stakeholder and community engagement. All options also allow for decisions on a draft policy to be made by one council rather than across different council terms. As it was this council which asked us to commence work on developing an LAP, our recommended option for the work is to be completed this term, described in the report as option one. The timeframe for providing council with the opportunity to complete an LAP process this term is viable, but we know that there is some risk. For example, that there is limited time to accommodate any delays in the process and we also note the busy schedule for council and the public for the remainder of this council term. The other options provided are equally viable. Option two, which pauses work on an LAP after undertaking early community engagement, would enable staff to continue to make progress on an LAP this council term and would build on the engagement to date. The early engagement would be done at a time most suitable before the end of the council term and then staff would return to the new council in the new term seeking decisions. Option three simply pauses work on an LAP now and early engagement on the issues and options would not take place and future decisions on an LAP would be for the next council. Thank you.
That was concise and succinct. Thank you. Elizabeth, have you got anything to add? No. So we opened up for questions then. I've got Kelly and then councillor Templeton.
Thank you. I was just wondering if you could clarify some points under three point one four, which is the possible policy options to address these issues too. And then obviously you got reduced trading hours for off-licenses etcetera. In the interest of time, are we able to perhaps ask less questions or look at less of these options? Or do we have to look at all of them? What's your thinking there?
So it's possible for council to narrow down the options we engage with on the community, but we would strongly advise engaging on all of the options. So all of the possible options that have been proposed address the range of issues that we've identified and because no one single option on its own would address the range of issues that we've identified, we'd encourage councillors to seek the views of the community on that range and also at this early stage before we start drafting an LAP.
Okay. So you couldn't, for instance, take out on-licenses? Would that save time and resources etcetera, considering that they're already very heavily regulated?
It wouldn't necessarily, I don't think, save time and resources on our behalf. We would be undertaking the engagement if you choose for us to do so anyway, I guess. But there is also some risk around narrowing the options too early and too much. Might defer to my legal colleague here.
Yeah, because I'd just be interested in what input, other than telling you to do the work, that we have into the scope of the work?
That's a good question and you'll talk about the risk, potentially legal risk?
Excuse me, reading from my notes through the chair. Section seventy-seven of the Local Government Act requires council in the course of decision-making process to seek to identify all reasonable practical options for achieving the objective of what they're of the decision-making and assess those options as against their advantages and disadvantages. So if the consequences of only submitting on the preferred options for consultation would be that council would have insufficient information to reach a properly informed view on all the options. There is case law, recent case law involving the Wellington City Council where they only put one option forward and that was seen as being insufficient. So we've, this staff, as I understand it, have assessed the options and this is what they think are the preferred options, or sorry, not preferred options, but the most practical options or reasonable options.
Yeah, because it seems to me a bit of a blunt instrument. It's like you've got a seatbelt problem in a car, but you're sort of, you know, you're going through the whole car to see whether it's safe. You know, is there no way of narrowing it down? Is that what you're saying? There's no way of narrowing it down?
I'm not saying that, but I just, I believe that if you didn't look at all the practical options that staff have assessed as the most reasonably practical options, then you might be subject, there might be a heightened chance of challenge.
So just following on from that, if I may, I think it's a really good question and you mentioned Wellington Council only put one option, so that's not very helpful.
It's not in relation to an LAP, but it was another decision.
Yes, but if we were to put, say, four, which could be the two of them to do with off-licenses or three of them to do with off-licenses and then the option F, which is other measures that gives people the opportunity to feed in a broad spectrum and take out D and E, that could be possible, couldn't it? Say, would you still recommend not to do that?
My personal view is I would recommend that you go out on the six. You consult on then those matters and then come back and make your decisions as to whether it is worthwhile going forward with those practical options.
Yep. So noting that today we will be making a decision on just proceeding to go out or not and then you will come back and we'll make the decision about the consultation.
At which time we'll be able to confirm the advantages and disadvantages. Without that, you are at risk.
Yes, thank you. That's a good question. Councillor Templeton?
Thanks. Yeah, so just clarifying there, because I think there's still a little bit of ambiguity with some, that we don't make another decision on the engagement material. We would make a decision after the engagement on what to do about a draft.
That's right. So what the engagement does is it's asking community about the six options. What that allows us to do is staff to, it may help us rule in, rule out or amend any of the options.
But we're not making another decision on whether to go out for engagement. This is the go-out engagement.
And so this is that decision, yeah.
Yeah, and then that engagement allows us to, if we choose, narrow down the scope to the things because we've got the information.
Exactly, that's right.
Yeah, councillor Moore?
That's right. Yeah, I was just going to note the timeline set out in the report doesn't provide for us to come back.
That's right.
In between the consultation and council considering a draft LAP. So that compressed timeline doesn't allow time for us to do that pre-engagement, come and talk to you and then draft the LAP. We would be, yeah, doing the pre-engagement. The next discussion with you is with a draft LAP.
I think there's a risk in that, it may not be a formal decision because that takes a lot of time, but we would be having workshops or something based on.
No, I don't think the timeframe allows for workshops. I'm not sure, but it's, yeah.
Surely we would get feedback on the results of.
So if council were to choose option one, the next time we would come back to council would be in April with the draft LAP, which would be also a discussion at the same time of what we had heard and why we had landed on what, from the engagement and why we had landed there.
So, and just to clarify, if at that point, because that is a tight timeframe, so if we go out for this engagement now and you come back with a draft and at that point if councillors want more work on their draft, you, there would be an option to pause and do it next term instead. Councillor.
Yeah, yes.
Because it wouldn't involve too much time to be able to fit in before the end of the year. Okay, so that makes sense.
Would that mean rescinding part of this decision today, which is to be done?
No, it would be a different decision next.
Do it then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor Moore?
Thank you. So in coming back in April, what ability will council have to chop and change what it basically proceeds with as part of a draft?
That, you go. So the, yeah, so staff will come back with the draft in April. There is limited time to chop and change. So I think if the, if council were to choose the option one and if council would like us at any stage to reconsider the options put in front of council to make changes and return to council, that means that the timeframes for option one would be squeezed too much for us to fit that in. So at that stage, we would be seeking decision from council to then go to the special consultative procedure in April, if council was comfortable with what the draft had in it. If not, there might be a time where the council could pause or.
So I guess what I'm asking is if it was comfortable with some parts of it in April and not comfortable with other parts, could it proceed with some parts, remove other parts?
If we needed a bit more time to work through those kind of changes, then it might mean that timeframe wasn't viable.
Okay, so what it's sounding like to me is basically if we want to proceed with option one, we have to go with all options that are in front of us now and then come April, we'll have to go forward with whatever you come back to us with and we won't really be able to chop and change.
For consultation, not decision.
But as part of a draft. The basic going forward is very prescriptive.
Just to be clear, you are always required to do this. You are always required to make decisions based on the information and the evidence you had before you and you are always in consultation, having to go into consultation with an open mind. You can't predetermine the outcome when you go into consultation. This is the standard requirement of a council, according to the Local Government Act.
This is determining what we go and consult on, is what I'm asking. So the process in April is very similar to what we're doing here.
So the decision today isn't determining what you consult on through the special consultative procedure. That's a decision you take later on. Yep. The decision today is the pre-engagement on the options that we've set out at this point.
But come April, it's an all or nothing. You're either going consulting on, you're going with all of it?
No, no. In April, they will come back with advice about what you should be going to consult on.
Yeah.
And then it's your decision.
Based on pre-engagement feedback.
Yeah, but we're, but then we have to either go with that or not. We can't decide that, we just agree to some of their advice and decide to consult on less of it.
Well, depending how big it was, you will be advised in April whether the change that you want to make is significant enough that you'd need to pause the process or it could be done quickly and you can proceed.
Okay, cool. Now that's useful. Thank you. And it's a question around option C, so around no new licence premises within a hundred metres of certain following community facilities on the bank place of worship. Have venues auditorium been given a heads-up because there is a cathedral right by the new stadium? Which this would prevent them from getting a liquor licence, would it not?
So on that option and across all of the LAP options, actually, the district licensing committee has, does have discretion around. um has, does have discretion around applying the local alcohol policy.
Yeah.
So there can be circumstances when um the D L C, in a certain um su- uh in a certain example, might feel that adhering to the local alcohol policy um uh is unsuitable and and not apply in a given situation. The issues in options paper um does put forward the idea of um that uh the D L C can essentially grant an exemption um on on this um on this option. Um and that would be in instances, for example, where um a person applying for the licence could show that they could manage appropriately um the risks, or they've talked to the community appropriately, those sort of items. So um there are there are things within an L A P that um that would give, I guess, um to be able to manage any of those sort of unintended consequences that that you might, yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So i- if if a facility with thirty-five thousand people is able to get an exemption, then automatically pretty much anyone would be able to. So in which case.
It's not a bottle store, though.
No, no, it's all new licences. So that's baths, restaurants, stadiums, anyone with a licence.
So the other thing.
It's all licences.
Uh the other thing that an L A P also has to keep in consideration is the district plan and um and so as part of our work in developing a draft L A P, we would consider what was our district plan, would say, um in terms of uh revitalising the central city and and um vibrant central city and those sort of things as well. So um it'd be part of the considerations that both we would make and as part of drafting the L A P and also the D L C would have um some discretion around the decisions that they make.
Yeah, so, okay, so so it's going to consult on a plan noting that regardless of what the plan is, it might not be enforced that way anyway, is sort of.
So the D L C still takes decisions on a case-by-case basis, having regard to the L A P. That's how the legislation is set up.
Councillor McClellan?
Thank you. Um so I I'm assuming then that it's highly likely that the district plan would probably, if it was, say, a licence in a commercial area, that's unlikely to be affected um by the hundred-metre option rule?
Uh yeah, potentially. Like, if that's the way we drafted it, that's possible. Um as I say, the the L A P has to give regard to the district plan. That's in legislation. That's what we've done. So one of our examples, um uh one of our possible options that we've put forward is one of those examples around um uh the option that focuses on suburban on licences rather than ones in the city, because we don't want the the city on licences being impacted in the same way.
Oh, without digging into the weeds too much on any particular obscure, you know, um thing that may or may not come out of an L A P, I'm happy to move the staff option one as as written.
And Mark, second, second to Mark. So councillor Harrison Hunt?
Kira team, you're probably noticing that my colleagues and maybe other stakeholders are a little bit worried about fish hooks within the policy. That um restrict vibrancy within the C B D and maybe other areas within the city. Uh in terms of that pre-consultation engagement, would we be able to iron out some of those potential snags within the policy and would there be changes accordingly?
Yeah, yes. So um that would be, I guess, uh some of the point of the that pre-engagement would be. So we'd be asking um the community and stakeholders to be um responding on the uh options themselves and the details, some of the details within them as well. So um, you know, for instance, certain times around that, some of them apply or do apply. We've put forward some ideas on those. But if we got community feedback that um uh that they uh that community wanted something different, we would make changes, we could make changes space for those.
Great. And I read your comprehensive report. It was great. Thank you so much for that. The question uh next I have is around the stacking up of um research and statistical analysis in comparison to community voice. How does how does the council weigh that up when considering issues like this?
So the Supreme Court, in looking at Auckland's L A P, said we take account of both. So it's a balancing ha- act is with all of these policy processes.
Great.
Community preferences can inform an L A P along with the data.
Awesome. Last question is around the timelines. And when we're considering the timelines, particularly with option one, uh what I'm trying to understand is sort of a breakdown in layman's terms in in how the process will work from here. And this is probably for public knowledge, too. And from the pre-consultation engagement to the development of that post the engagement and onwards. Would you be able to just quickly brush over what the process is going to be from here on out, going up to April?
Yep, sure. So um so uh should we proceed with option one? The uh we would do our early engagement that we're discussing today would happen from uh three weeks between February to March, across February to March. We would then do analysis on that engagement and draft um and L A P accordingly. Um there'd be a decision in April for council on that draft L A P. And that decision would be whether to move to a um special consultative procedure, which um which is required by the Act for us to do on a draft L A P. That um would happen April to May. Um we would then um obviously based on uh that consultation, we would um we would al- always sort of analyse and revisit the results of that. Um we would have hearings and deliberations, which would be the full council. Um that would be in June and a decision um then would be in July.
Great. I just want to acknowledge that I read the report, but the public probably didn't. So that's, it's probably really good for them. Thank you for consolidating. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. Um councillor McDonald?
Yeah, um thank you. The, so I guess what I'm trying to understand initially is uh how much, so do we have, I know we said we're doing a draft after the pre-engagement, and I'm just looking at the instruction from June twenty-four. Have we got a working document at the moment in terms of a draft L A P?
No.
No. Okay, so what, so except for the engagement in December, November and December, what's the work been done since June on the L A P?
Um so we've um been talking to, uh so there's been research and data that we've collected. So there was a, there was the research report that was shared with councillors last week. Um there was over two hundred pages of the the analysis that we've done. Um that includes uh things like literature reviews, analysis of other L A Ps um that the country has, um as well as getting data from police, health and other um and other places as well. We've also talked to um I think ten uh key stakeholders across that time um as well, so representatives um uh from, again, police, health and uh the licensing committee, as we're required to, licensing inspectors. Um we've also talked to representatives of uh supermarkets, bottle stores, uh clubs. Um I I probably, off the top of my head, missing some as well, but we've tried to um talk to a range of.
Leave the list in there.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And so that's, so based on that that research and data and those conversations is where we've landed today.
Right.
And we had to develop the issues and option, having done all that, we had to develop the issues and options paper and compile the research report. So all of that takes a little bit of time.
No, that that makes that makes sense. So I guess probably where I'm trying to get to, and it'd be no surprise because I've been nervous about the timeline the whole way along. So what, so at this point, what's the point of pre-engagement?
So the the pre-engagement allows us um to hear uh better what the community thinks more specifically about local alcohol, uh the local alcohol policy possible options. The idea is that um we will get better sense of community views before we actually start drafting the L A P itself. So essentially, it's a way to hear community views um before we have to go into the more formal sub special consultative procedure, before we hit the 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 time to actually start drafting.
So would there be a, like, is there a way to not do pre-engagement and give us more time as a council? I'm just thinking, you've done two months of it, and like you said, from June last year, we've done the research, we've done the key stakeholder engagement. But a- and again, you know, I'm all for some changes here, but I'm nervous about the timing. Do we need that pre-engagement window or can we not just go out and consult?
Um Kira, uh council, um taking the pre-engagement enables us to refine any of the options put forward into a position and understand the community views on those options. There are a range within them in terms of timing, in terms of what community facility is actually a sensitive site when you test it alongside the potential condition you're putting forward. Um I believe that pre-engagement is your um best bet in enabling a robust policy if you choose to to have one, that meets the balance of the community's needs that they're telling us and the requirements that you have as council for other things like district planning and the advocacy that you're receiving from industry at the moment. In order to use pre-engagements to develop the um conditions and refine them to a space that may be most comfortable and most balanced, um you need to do it. If you don't do it, you run the risk of it not not being like the best the best of all of those areas that you need to balance.
So just to clarify, it's really to make sure that the information about the advantages and disadvantages that go out on the consultation document are accurately reflected. It's not to make the decision, it's just making sure the consultation document truly reflects the advantages and disadvantages both from the research work you've done and from the information from key informants in communities.
Yeah, and that's that's what I'm struggling with. I I, that's what I thought would have been done. So, because I'm I'm, again, I'm nervous about the timeline, but the the, what I guess what I'm wanting to know is, can we not just go out? Like, could we, would we be be better to have a longer consultation period? Um and then we're going to refine that work as a council anyway, because it it sounds like we're going to refine the options, then get to April. And then it sounds like, you know, based on the L G A, L G A advice, that we're going to take those options out.
So what you're actually wanting to know now is, do we have enough information for staff to refine options now on the pre-pre-engagement?
Yeah, well, just with the, like, there's been, like, you've said, there's been a mountain of work done.
I think I think a need to robust proposal that goes out for consultation. And you'll need that uh that pre-engagement and other work will need to be done to allow that to happen.
So far, we understand communities' preferences into in relation to their perceptions around access to alcohol in the communities through the Life and Christ Church survey. We don't understand community perceptions in relation to potential conditions that could be considered further.
Okay, thank you. Uh councillor Coca?
Um I'm following up from that, really. Um so those options that you've come to us with, when did you actually kind of formally develop those? Like, when did you sort of, we've got our options now?
December.
Is that just very recently?
November, December, as the data was coming in from statutory consultees and as we were going through the stakeholder process.
Recent, yeah. Um and if we were to go and consult now, we would need to include all the options, wouldn't we? If we were to skip the pre-engagement, um like Sam said, we'd need to include all options out in a full consultation. Yeah. So um while I, from some of the other questions that have been asked, I was wondering um for the pre-engagement process, what input councillors would have into that? Because there seem to be some questions about whether people trust that process.
So in terms, if it was option one, uh we need to work at pace, there would would be little, not very much availability to input into the process itself. If you went with option two, we can um consider how we include that further.
So in terms of who is talked to during that process, would councillors be able to have input?
Can provide feedback on that, yeah.
Hmm, okay.
Yes, because I, sometimes that we're advised not to talk about something that we're making a decision on, but in the pre-engagement process, we can, is that right?
You'd be, if you had people you wanted to suggest that that needed to be engaged with you, you could send it through to the team and they could add it to the list.
Is that the best way forward? Okay, that looks like the end of the questions. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any debate?
Love, we'll share that option two. Be no surprise, given.
Do you have debate? Fire away.
Um I would really like to urge my colleagues to please support our communities in going for this option today to um box on and look to land this before our elections coming up in October. Um we shouldn't have our eyes so firmly focused on the elections that we don't feel we can make any decisions between here and there. Um there's a lot to be done before the elections and um the community's been screaming out this L A P for a very long time. And it's, you know, worth noting that the staff are confident that they can follow this process through on the time scale needed. Um and also to be doing it safely. Um the last thing we need as a council is to have this um fall into the trap that happened in previous occasions where judicial reviews were brought in and that sort of thing. So keeping an open mind and considering all of the um engagement and feedback as we go along the process is wise governing, which I think all of us around this table um like to think we do. So um here's hoping we can continue to chug on down this road and get this landed. Um the communities need it and um I urge you to please support this today.
Councillor Skandrit?
Yeah, um I continually worry about the on license, uh the off, uh the, sorry, the um.
Online shopping?
Online shopping and um how it affects the local communities and also how it affects the local industry. We have some really good operators and I I'm looking forward to hearing from them and what they want. Because, you know, not not every off-licence and not every on-licence is bad. Majority of them, the major majority of them are great operators. It's the ones that aren't that we need to concentrate on and give um ourselves and our community support where those are. Um but I think when we need legislation, it's missing. And um when we don't need legislation, there's so much red tape. And it does come from Wellington and I think that they have, with online gambling as well, they have missed the boat by about a century. So I'm really looking forward to the pre-engagement, both from our communities and our operators. Thank you.
Okay, um and I'd just like to think, oh, councillor Moore?
Yeah, um well, there's been general agreement that we have an issue with proliferation of bottle stores and everything else. Um um but we're going to go ahead and develop and consult on a plan that cracks down on all forms of licences. Uh we are going to go ahead and consult and develop on a plan which restricts the ability to open new bars and restaurants, even in the central city. Um the district licensing committee would have discretion, but bars and restaurants, in five point three two in the report, uh will have to demonstrate that the premises can be managed in a way that addresses their concerns.
More carefully, because that is not.
Well, I'm I'm just reading what's in the report.
It's a consultation process.
I'm literally just reading what's in the report that we're making a decision on today. That's that's what I'm doing.
It's not a directive.
It's it's not a directive, but this is what we're going to go and develop and what we're going to ask the public. Um and it would include, it would include areas like the new stadium. Um so I don't think asking the public about this stuff is going to go down all that well. I think it's going to undermine our confidence to be able to develop a policy that addresses harm. Uh and it's pretty hard to manage thirty-five thousand people after an event. So if they can get an exemption, then surely everyone can get an exemption. And why have we got the policy in the first place? All this stuff just isn't making sense to me. Um we're trying to revitalise the central city. So to make it really hard and put a lot of burden on businesses to be able to open a new bar restaurant i- is going to become problematic. So to rush a process like this just because there's an election, so we're here to make decisions um full and wholesome decisions, like we've talked about, that considers all evidence and everything else, I agree. So why are we rushing it? So it's done and dusted before an election? Um you should be doing the opposite and taking the time that you need. Um I don't think this is going to go down well, so I won't be joining you in supporting this. Um and good luck. Don't say it and warn you.
Councillor McClellan?
Yeah, I think we need to be careful not to box our shadows here. Look, let's not pick the most obscure and unrealistic options that may come out of a lap and use that as an excuse not to act. We have a responsibility, whenever we're consulting with the public, to consult on a range of options, all practic- practicable options, in fact. Uh that's what we have to do here as well. Remember, any decision at the end of the day, we can get to any decision at the end of the process. My read of the table is that off-licence off uh licence hours and the proliferation of bottle stores in low socio-economic communities are clearly what's squarely in our sights. So let's have some trust in our colleagues to make a sensible sensible decision at the end of the process. Otherwise, we would never consult on anything. We might as well not do an annual plan because it's too broad-based and we can make any decision uh from that. The reality is, if you believe harm from alcohol is occurring and that changing the settings would reduce that harm, and indeed the evidence shows that that is true, and you acknowledge what the staff have said, which is that they can complete the lap before the election, then why would you not act? Why would you not, why would you allow harm uh to occur when there's no reason to delay and we have the tools to do so? After all, why would we put off until tomorrow what we can do today to reduce harm sooner? So I'm proud to say that by the end of this term, our council will be able to put in place measures that reduce alcohol harm in Oratahi.
Um councillor Templeton?
Kira, um I'd like to start by thanking staff for the huge man.
Kira, um I'd like to start by thanking staff for the huge amount of work put into this so far. Um and acknowledge that it's been really, really tough um for hospitality in this city for a really, really long time now. Um uh many businesses in the central city struggled before the quakes. Uh then we had the quakes, then the pandemic. It has been really tough. And the last thing anyone wants to do is to put a break on the central city. Um however, at the same time, our communities have been calling out for help in our communities, um especially around um bottle stores off licenses. We can do two things at the same time with this L A P. But doing it and doing it well does rely on having a good process. Um last uh last term, we made some really big calls, um quite big decisions, really close to the election. Um one on Plan Change fourteen, where council decided not to go out um and consult when it had been directed to um legislatively. Um and another one on adding an extra hundred and fifty million dollars to the budget of Takaha to cover the cost blowout. Both those were made um close to the election, um and no concerns were raised about it at that time. Our communities ask us again and again to engage and to engage well and to engage early, that's what this is. Today's decision is not about going out to consultation on a draft that limits um uh things in the central city. Today's decision is to engage and then when there is a draft, there is a new decision point for council on whether we go out to consult on that draft and what is in it. Today's dec- decision is different to that. The decision that we will get in a couple of months' time will be based on the knowledge that we have, the information we have from our communities and from the other um information coming in, for example, from Auckland, um with the stats and data on how things have worked there. That decision in April or May will be the decision on whether we consult. To have a robust L A P that deals with the issues that our communities have currently with bottle stores opening um near all sorts of places, schools and things. Um we need the good process. Um it is tough. This is the pointy end of governance where we have to do things that have nuance, where some people will disagree with what we're doing and imply um ulterior motives. But this is the pointy end of it and I'd encourage people to go ahead at this stage. A different decision can be made later. Thanks.
Kira, uh councillor Hensock?
Actually, I'm okay. I don't have anything new to add to what already has been said. Thanks.
Kira, councillor Barber?
Yeah, thank you. Um yeah, I've oscillated back and forth on this, but um I really feel that we need to take the opportunity to do something now, uh rather than wait till after the election. Um I think we have an opportunity to make a a bit of a difference in in our communities. Um yeah, I feel like um off lines, off licenses um need to be looked at closely. Um I feel like licensed premises are already heavy re- heavily regulated and and doing a responsible job and I don't think we have the same control over off licenses. Uh as I've mentioned before, I have a family member who is profoundly affected by alcohol. Uh they would never get alcohol in a licensed premise, but they do in off licenses. So that's where uh I'm really looking with interest to see what changes uh can be made there. Uh without, you know, we, it doesn't look like we can look at uh online purchasing and things like that, but um you know, I think it's good for us to go through the process and uh the sooner the better.
Councillor Harrison Hunt?
Yeah, I just want to address a couple of things. Uh councillor Barber brought up a really cool analogy around the seatbelt issue. And uh instead of just addressing the seatbelt, this is more of a warrant of fitness where we have to dress the whole vehicle um before we actually can fix those issues. Uh the next thing is around um the political capital that's involved in this L A P. And uh it's actually, has nothing to do with politics if I'm completely honest, because as the councillor for Ricketon uh I represent Studentville, you know, and I'm not doing it, I'm not pushing pushing this forward to do a pre-engagement consultation because uh I'm worried about an election, I'm doing it because it's right. Um there's been multiple times, and Ricketon is one of the the heaviest hit wards in regards to alcohol harm in the city. And if we're talking about places like Ilim, Upper Ricketon Church Corner, that's that's where students go, that's where they go to recreate. And uh I've even been invited to house parties to to run some, to run some uh engagement workshops on how to vote. You know, those are things that um that's part of who I am as a councillor, where I have to go to those areas. So that has nothing to do with politics, this has to do with what's right. And what's right is to get this done as fast as we can, making sure that we're fully engaged and we're fully listening to the community. Now, if by chance we come to April and we still don't feel comfortable that it's all completely right, then we can hold off on it. But for now, all we're doing is just telling them to keep working through, work on the timeline and make sure it's seen appropriately. And the pre-engagement consultation is something that we don't usually see. We usually go out with a bit of paper saying, hey, we're gonna do some work here. Can you uh have a say on it? But now we're going to the stakeholders, we're going to those who are affected. I think everyone in this room um has been affected or knows someone who was affected by alcohol harm, and I can also say that myself. Uh and if you guys don't remember, uh back in the day, on the terrace, uh before it was Riverside, uh the terrace was quite a dangerous little catchment when I was a young fella. And it was completely different environment. So the on-licens is doing a phenomenal job at the moment and making sure that our community is safe. But after the three A M time, you know, there could be potential to re-look at that. There might not be. I don't want to be predetermined and I don't, I want to encourage my other colleagues to not sound like they're being predetermined, to ensure that you have an open mind and an open voice. Kilda.
Thank you. Councillor Fields?
Hi, Kilda. Um so I'll speak in in support of the motion. I um genuinely, I'm a little bit like you, councillor Barber. I've sort of oscillated around, I've got different views on on this. Um I mean, I lived in um London for thirteen years and um you know, you can you can pretty much buy alcohol at any time um in London. It's a very convivial city. Um and who doesn't love conviviality? So I like to support conviviality. I mean, I've I've sort of travelled around Europe and seen all the different types of drinking and the Europeans do convivial well. Um so so that's kind of one side of it, but at the other side, if you don't think alcohol harm can uh uh exists in those countries, that's crazy. The country with the least alcohol harm in Europe is Norway and they have the tightest regulations. Um you can't buy alcohol after six P M in an off license um in Norway, and I'm still think that Norway's still still fairly convivial as well. So kind of, I've got all of these things sort of bubbling around um in my head, but I think ultimately we do need to go to the community to look at this, um to get their opinions on this and and just see what comes back. Um I I hope that um there aren't any unintended consequences um that emerge out of this. That's probably one concern, but again um it's about asking the community and talking to them and he- and hearing their ideas um about what what they want. Um and I go back to my experience in England, um uh convivial they may be, but the only time I ever saw a fight in a pub in England was between New Zealanders and Australians, so I don't know what that says about our drinking culture, but um it's probably something that does need to be looked at. Um so um hopefully at the end of this, um everyone realizes that Littleton's probably got the best approach to um to how we um to to a sort of a a local um policy type arrangement, which is that all the off licenses are closed at nine. And there's very good social cohesion and um sort of sort of social uh I don't want to say pressure, but you know, everyone works together to ensure people don't come to uh to harm. So hopefully that's what comes at the end of this, um and so happy to support.
Thank you. That's everybody. Um any closing remarks? From the mover? No. No, and um look, you know, I was going to speak, but I can't top um councillor Harrison Hunt for that fantastic summary. And I totally agree with your view as well. So um and I also just want to add my thanks to to staff as well for the work that you've done and the work that you will be doing. Um I know this is in incredibly technical work in some ways as well because you're looking at all the evidence and trawling through all sorts of stuff and then you have the human factor to weave into that. So we'll look forward to your report coming back in around April. Um and on that note, I will move, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's three. Do you want that recorded?
It's the McDonald, Henstock, and Moore.
So that's carried. Right. So we will move on to item. Thank you. Item twenty one, the council's submission on the resource management consenting another system changes amendment bill. Good afternoon.
Good uh good afternoon now.
One minute, yeah.
By one minute. Um thanks. We we take the council report as read. However, we do want to highlight and talk to a late amendment made to the draft submission, which is attachment A, which was circulated to you on Monday. The draft submission, we're therefore seeking approval of today, um has been amended from the draft that that was published with the agenda. The amendment specifically, the new paragraph five, has been has been made to address our concerns regarding the proposed process to withdraw parts of the M D R S that are undecided. These proposed provisions do not provide for a cost-effective and simple means to withdraw these undecided parts. I'll pass over to Ike, who's going to talk this through in more detail.
Thank you, Helena. Um as Helena said, we've received a better advice on the uh option that the bill puts forward for um having uh an opt-out for the M D R S specifically for the scenario where our council is yet to decide on uh applying the M D R S, which is obviously our scenario. Um we had originally thought that it was an uh approach whereby we would have to evaluate the current N P S U D um in terms of our uh conformance with Policy Three, write to the minister and we can withdraw, and then that's that. Unfortunately, there is an additional clause that is separate to um the clause that addresses uh that option, which states that should a council do that in terms of uh um going through the opt-out of the matters that are under better so um that are yet to be decided, then we will also have to go through the process of um a new streamlined planning process to give effect to the new national policy statement on urban development. Um put simply, what that means then is that the two options that are only available um for Plan Change fourteen are to either decide on what is outstanding for Plan Change fourteen, as in the areas beyond Policy Three, um or to do a new plan try- Plan Change process to give effect to the new N P S U D, um which would begin next year. Um so that's the position of the bill, um and so that's what we have targeted in terms of the amendment that um Helena mentioned uh in paragraph five, um highlighting the uh in our opinion, um highly inefficient process um that that leads to considering the infancy of our Plan Change fourteen decision.
Okay, can I, councillor Templeton?
Thanks for that. Um completely agree with that being included. Thank you for picking that up. Um a separate topic though. Um on some issues we've had, we've had a a sort of a decline in the past overlooking at um the ability for councils who have uh highly formidable pine plantations close to urban areas. Um and whether we could include something in here that um discusses that. This isn't probably directly, I'm told um in this one, but indicating our preference for the ability for councils to do that, noting that the current proposed process and our submission says, yes, extend consents, but actually if we can extend them and we're saying we want to be able to do that, does that mean we have a problem with limiting pine plantations near our urban areas? Does that all make sense?
Yeah, so uh if I can, we have uh got um a national environmental standard for our commercial forestry, the N E S C F, which was very recently updated. Um that directs as a permitted standard that there has to be at least thirty metre separation of any um afforestation, so new planting of forest um from an urban area. So that's the that's the baseline, if you will. The changes to the um eh N E S, used to be the N S P F, but N E S C F, um now mean that a district plan can also have controls that are either more restrictive or more enabling than the baseline that the N E S sets. And so that ability is still uh uh given to us through the current legislative framework, um uh through the regulation of the R M A. So should we want to have additional controls, then then we can do that. It simply requires a separate plan change to do that. Um there's no other additional change that that would be required uh through um the submission, so it's unrelated in our opinion.
Yeah, but this is for that that, and and that'd be great, and I think we should, but that's for new plantations rather than the ability to um uh make changes to existing plantations, existing land uses where potentially there has been a fire and then a desire for some in the community not to replant, which is not a new forest. It's just a replanted, and our ability to make those changes. Is that something that would go in here?
Um I guess our view is that it wouldn't necessarily fall into the submission. Um it may come through when we receive the National Direction Package, um if it forms part of that, um later, well, relatively soon when that package comes through, but our preference would be that, or our advice would be that it doesn't form part of this submission.
We could give them a heads up though. I don't know. It's just something that's, you know, um yeah, is it not appropriate to for them to be adding those kind of things in this particular piece? No.
Yeah, I mean, again, our our opinion is that um the current framework allows for us to do that change. So if we feel that there is a change that's required in terms of those provisions, um then then we can do that change, but I mean, in terms of your point of existing um forests, uh it's quite hard to take away that existing use right that exists there as as it stands. Um and so if they're already existing there, then they have that existing use right. Um there may be some changes in terms of conditions that we can review in terms of performance that these forthcoming changes allow for. Um so we could um utilize that in the future.
Okay, so just, yeah, for the for so for whichever one is coming up next, we want to the ability to be able to make those changes on conditions. And it might be that near urban, you, we want to change it to a a setback that is in line with new plantings, not in line with the existing conditions.
Yep.
Those kind of things, that'd be great.
So sorry, just in addition to to that, we do have two new bills proposed to come in towards the end of the year, and that might be the more appropriate time to raise these types of issues where, because you're talking about existing resource consensus as well and existing use rights.
So might some of that come in through the Adaptation Act? Because that's the hazard mitigation, it's not just sea level rise, it's other hazards.
It it could, um but also the new bills might be an opportunity there because the previous bills were considering things like how to deal with existing use rights as well, which did include Climate Adaptation Act then.
And and like Helena said, there's there's new direction for um natural hazards as well, which may very well include something like um wildfire risk.
Yeah.
And so we can put a submission on that on that basis.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. I I see in the um bill that they talk about giving um more um permissive planning for inland ports and also wood processing. Given the um decision that we've seen around the Portland site, have we have we looked at any sort of amendments that we feel might be beneficial to safeguarding the community around the environmental effects of inland port activity?
We haven't commented specifically on that um in our submission, no.
Could we put something in? But my reading of the bill, and I don't know if this is the correct one, is that it refers to port authorities. But inland port activities, if it's not a port authority, can be just as dam- damaging and disruptive as a port authority.
Yeah, I I mean, we can come back, um if there's an amendment that that you want specifically added to that, um I guess staff can can look at that.
Yeah, we we also saw um people fumigating logs, and I don't know if that would come under wood processing. Um but they didn't, yeah, they didn't have a consent, so for methyl bromide fumigation of logs, which I assume is like a port sort of um thing, so I just think it would be useful to put some concern. Um the other thing is that with the Portland site, there's always a a serious health and safety concern with the containers falling over. So um that we don't seem to have any ability in our district plan to take a health and safety wellbeing approach to some of the things that we're considering. And I'm just wondering if that if this, again, looking at what's in here, is an opportunity to raise the need to be able to look at 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 those sorts of things, rather than just rely on work safe, which the community kind of ring repeatedly, but doesn't seem to make any difference.
Yeah, so the the health and safety is captured in the purpose of the Act and the R M A. Um and so through the ability to monitor the performance of our consent holders that this um change uh allows for in terms of those conditions of consent, um in my view, would be able to um better monitor those conditions of consent um in light of giving effect to um the health and safety um of, you know, containers or whatever the case may be.
Right, but the question, I guess, is if you've got an existing activity that doesn't need a consent and it's causing a health and safety issue for the local community, do we have any powers to do anything about it?
Plan change. Um so uh we we have the ability, obviously, to make a plan change and we are doing that for industrial activities as we speak.
But that doesn't give, if it's a health and safety issue, with due respect, like waiting, you know, a couple of years, half a decade to do a plan change doesn't give, doesn't give the community much sense of sa- safety or or security. doesn't give the community much sense of safety or security.
Yeah, no, I think in, in terms of the industrial activities, the plan change is scheduled to come before you this year, so it's, it's not a matter of delaying any further.
In there, you've, you've supported targeted amendments to compliance and enforcement provisions, which gives us more ability to act. So that, that's a comfort. I'm just thinking like number twenty-one, where you talk about the significant, the changes in the R M A over, over the years have placed significant pressures on councils. And we're consistently shouldering the costs to implement piecemeal reforms. For example, it's anticipated the recent I P I process will cost upward of seven million, including staff time. Could we add, these costs will need to be borne by our rate payers at the bottom of that? I know it's obvious, but, and then also can we add that to twenty-two as well? That's regarding the issue with the N P S U D.
Yes, it's, the rate payers is included in that twenty-two, but I'll add it to the twenty-one as well.
Yeah, just to call it out, I think. Because we are all trying to keep the rates increases down as low as we can. Are there any other questions? Can I call for a mover for the report? Councillor Harrison Hunt, and seconded by councillor McClellan. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, say aye. Propose, that's carried. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us through to the staff report on the Rafiti water zone rezoning and pressure management trial report.
Good afternoon. I haven't prepared a presentation to speak to this report, but if I may, I would like to highlight the three takeaways out of this. So firstly, rezoning and pressure management are challenging tasks that take longer to implement than what was originally anticipated. And this is mainly because of the many iterations that's needed between, to align theory with, with actual practice. Secondly, the benefits that were initially identified have all been realised, but for various reasons, they're not readily measurable. There is however a clear link between enhanced water management, and which is also aligned with our smart water network objectives. And we now have more data points to improve water management in the Rafiti zone and to reap the benefits of pressure management. And then lastly, we will continue to implement the rezoning blueprint, but at a slower pace than what was originally envisaged. We also recognise that pressure management may not be feasible throughout, especially in those areas where we are supplying water into elevated storage reservoirs. We are actively promoting responsible and forward-thinking fire designs to better enable pressure management into the future. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Michelle. So my question is also around four point one point one, because when you, and this is one of the reasons for the delay, that you had to upgrade around two thousand five hundred metres of water supply mains. But you're actually reducing the pressure, so why did that have to be? I would have thought you would have had to upgrade them if you were increasing the pressure.
So in areas where there's large pressure and where the network has been established before to support that large pressure, it's easier to get the water flowing through at a certain flow rate if the pressure is high. If we reduce the pressure, it's a bit of a bottleneck, and therefore to, to secure our customer service levels, for each customer to have a specific pressure at the front of their site, it was necessary to upgrade pipes so that, so that we can make sure that we still meet those service levels.
Oh, thanks for that. I was just mystified. And so this is, are you able to now, you've got the data around this, you've got the model, are you allowed to transpose this to other zones where it's?
Yes, I think the lessons learned through, through this five-year programme is, has been of great benefit and is actually reshaping our programme going forward on how we are, are going to do it.
Fantastic. Councillor Harrison Hunt?
Kilda, I've just got some questions around the more economic parts of the report. And around, how do I word this? It's predominantly around fire engineers and, and other staff associated with that. Do we mostly hire internally to assess all of the, to assess all of the different parts of the trial within our mandate? So for example, are we using our staff or are we consulting, using consultants to assess the fire sprinklers, et cetera?
Most of that work has been done in-house. Where we needed to use the model to provide us with information, we, that's, that's supported externally. But the communication with the fire sprinkler companies, the letters, the getting the data, the going through the data, the letters to the individual property owners has all been done by, by, by our internal staff.
Really cool. No, that's, that's fine. Thank you so much.
No more questions. Oh, councillor Keown?
It's just a pretty generic one, but just around with any of the pressure changes or tests and stuff, are, are we confident in our firefighting abilities in those zones?
Yes, they've been, they've been tested by, by external suppliers as well to, to verify.
Just, just double, and a, a, another generic question on, because one of the problems in L A was when the power goes out, the pumps go out. Do we have that situation in this?
We have, we have a, a power, it's, it's not directly related to this, but we have a resilient strategy where, where we have key pump stations equipped with generators. They're not equipped to, to, not all the pump stations have generators and they're not equipped to supply during a peak demand period, but they are equipped to provide an average, average demand and which should be sufficiently to provide the basic F W two fire flow that, that we kind of
Yeah, the, the problem came in that the fires got to where the generators were as well, so.
Yeah.
Then it doesn't work, or we've got a backup?
We, one of the benefits of Christchurch, we have so, because of our system is decentralised, we, we don't just have one treatment plant and one pump station, we actually have various routes that can support such an incident.
Good questions too. Councillor Harrison Hunt, another one.
Again, back to the economics side of things. So the estimate was one point eight and the total was five point four. Was, can you talk to me about the reasons why there's a three million dollar gap there?
I would compare the one point eight with the three point three. The smart water network, in, in my opinion, was not part of the original scope. The difference is likely to more refined modelling that was done. The initial work was based on concepts. After more modelling, more pipes were identified. As I mentioned in the report, for Rafiti, it was a bit unique as well in that there were many more sub-mains that were really out of capacity even before, before the pressure management started. So there was a bit more work that had to, to be done. Generally, this, the upgrades or the renewals, it would have been part of renewals, but because we wanted to do it at a certain time period, we, we basically brought back renewals in order to provide those upgrades.
I see, so you're just moving budget across to, okay, facilitate it. That's cool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I'm happy to move this. Councillor Harrison Hunt, would you like to second it? You've asked so many questions. Is there any debate or discussion? The report, all those favours, say aye. Propose, that's carried. Right, so that takes us through to item, thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. Item twenty-three, the Regulatory and Compliance Unit update, July to December twenty twenty-four.
Pauline, are we, are we able just to get a sense of what time we're going to break?
Well, it's twelve twenty. We might get through these two by lunchtime and.
So is it one o'clock that you're looking at?
One o'clock. Or even before, because they're only short presentations, aren't they? Yeah. Yours are short. So one o'clock or earlier. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councillors, deputy mayor. As, as we mentioned, this is the last, previous activities for the last six months for the Regulatory Compliance Unit. It's the first staff report that you've seen for a while. So I'm wanting to just take the report as read and open the floor to any questions.
Can't be any shorter than that.
All right, councillor Donovan?
Um, thank you. Interesting. I was just wondering if you could just give us a bit more information around specifically to the freedom camping side of the compliance report? Because there's some detail there, but I can't quite see the detail of where some of those issues are occurring and what type of issues you see.
Okay, I'll just welcome my team leader who's responsible for that part.
May I, would you like to come?
First time caller, sorry. Was there something specifically that you were wanting to know about which area?
What we're seeing anecdotally shows that there is quite a bit of pressure on some of those areas, particularly along the beachfront, close to residential areas.
In the Brighton area?
Yeah, but I see there's a difference in the last two years in terms of the number of enforcement actions taken. But just looking at the total number in the last six months, I think, thirty, uh, first of July to thirty-first of December, there was a hundred and twenty-eight. So it's still quite a large number of complaints per month.
Yes.
So I just wondered if you had any information to build a picture of what you're seeing and if there's some trends? Because there has been some requests as to whether we can do more to kind of around enforcement, which comes at a cost, obviously, or perhaps look at what other councils are doing to maybe make some tweaks to how we're managing that.
Yeah, so we are, we're, the problems around ballpark in particular and the pier area car parks as well. We had quite a few complaints up until around Christmas time. Then we contacted our, we had new contractors allied to make sure that they were doing those areas. So I don't know if they were patrolling as, as often as they should have been at that time. We have noticed the complaints come down a, a lot since they have started those patrols there. We've also engaged with the Parks Unit as well regarding, often it's not freedom campers and it's homeless people, displaced people. So a part of our investigation or inquiries from the, from the patrols and from our, our officers, we need to determine whether it's a displaced person or whether it's a freedom camper. If they're a New Zealander and they haven't got a home to live in, or they're in their car, we can't do anything about that. And unfortunately, Brighton does attract, that area does attract a lot of homeless people out there as well.
Yeah. Is there sort of any areas that we can potentially be looking at to maybe further improve compliance? That you've, so I understand that Timor is looking at paid parking. Is that something that we can potentially explore? That might be outside of the scope of this, but perhaps I'll just email through that question.
That would be good. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Councillor Harrison Hunt?
Kilda?
Yeah. Kilda.
Just have two quick ones, and you can take them offline, it's no problem. The first one is around the noise complaints, and wondering if you have a breakdown on the locations that we might be able to, to view?
We do have a breakdown, but I don't have it on hand, so we could.
No, that's fine. Take that offline. The, the next one is something that was a bit, you, you won't know about this, but in the annual plan in twenty twenty-two, I asked the comms team to go back to the drawing board in regards to regulation and compliance around language barriers for restaurants, bars and on licences, because there, there's quite a prevalence of Asian community in my area. How, do you know how we're tracking along with addressing those language barriers when we're doing site visits?
We do have a library of commuter or language translated documentation specifically around food safety. And that, that question did actually come to me from the comms team when you asked it, so it does work. So no, we have got it all on our website so that people can access that. And also our verifiers, when they're going out, they identify whether or not there is a language barrier. And if so, sometimes we utilise family members that are in the area, in the premise as well, that can help translate, or otherwise we can engage with translators to combat that.
Awesome. No, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Barber.
Yeah, thank you. Under, under five point three regarding alcohol licensing, it says there are currently a hundred and twenty licensed premises that are classified either as high risk or very high risk. What does that mean?
Okay, you will see that there's a footnote at the bottom of that page that does go to try and explain that to you because it does, it is a complicated question. So it's, legislation has brought in a new risk-based regime that's applied when applications are received. And the criteria with this, so the high risk and the, the high and very high risk is based on applications that are received and the fee that they pay. So if they pay the high risk or very high risk fee, they then have the privilege of us coming to inspect them annually at a minimum.
Okay, so, yeah, I still don't quite get that. So we're only visiting them once a year if they're high risk or very high risk.
So the high risk is not pertaining to behaviour or activities that are occurring. It is applied to the fee that they pay. I can get Gareth to come down and.
Oh, maybe that's an offline explanation to me.
Yeah, so it is, the explanation is pretty much what's in the footnote of that report. So if there's further detail needed, we can explore that with you.
Great, thank you. Councillor Johansson?
Yeah, thank you. I just, I had several questions. One was just in regards to the food poisoning outbreak. We don't really get a conclusion. It says that we've done a comprehensive assessment of the food safety practices. Was there any findings around as a result of that in terms of what we're doing?
This is the one at the university you're talking about.
Yeah, and my understanding is that it's still under investigation and it has not been concluded at this point.
Right, so
So that's.
We'll get a report back, or can we get a memo back when that's concluded? Just to understand if we had any role or responsibility in that.
Well, how often will this report come to us?
Every six months.
So it'll be in the next report.
But, I mean, we're talking about kids getting sick at the university.
Yeah, and we've got staff who are looking at it, yeah.
It was a joint agency investigation also. It's N P I ourselves in public health. So we were, initially we were not the lead agency, but then N P I passed it over to us to take lead because it was in our area.
But those food sites effectively would have been, at some point, we would have verified them and we would have given them, you know, approval to operate, right?
That will all be clarified in the report, won't it?
Yeah.
Okay. The second question I had was around the, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to find the page where you've got the list of the complaints. But we, um.
Is it four, one, three?
It was just around the vacant derelict buildings, sites.
So that, that would be in the four point three?
So it's four, yeah, four, four thirteen. The environmental health compliance. And I'm just wondering if we know what the trend has been? And given how frustrated people are with some of these sites, is, is there anything that we can do to improve our responsiveness?
For?
So this is around environmental health. So basically what you have is a whole bunch of sites that get overgrown with vegetation. There's vermin, there's a whole bunch of antisocial behaviour that tends to get attracted to them. The neighbours get really concerned. Often there's fires that happen. And it just seems to get passed through and around the system. And I get it that we don't currently have, seem to have any really strong enough powers to do something ahead of preventing something happening.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, based on the information that we're getting around the tre, the trends, what, what is the trend around those sorts of complaints? But also, is there anything else, any other work programme that we could implement that would actually give residents greater reassurance around those issues being dealt with sooner? Rather than, than, you know, what, what tends to happen is the houses generally catch fire and burn down.
Yani, we need to get the answer.
Okay, so there is no legislation that governs derelict housing. So that's probably the first point to make. We utilise the legislation that we have at hand that is delegated to us as an authority to administer, which is the Building Act, the Resource Management Act, the Health Act, the litter bylaw. And we look at each site in its entirety in relation to all of the pieces of legislation that we administer. Unfortunately, if we don't administer it, we can't enforce it. Squatters on properties, antisocial behaviour is something that has to be referred to the police.
You know, and I agree with Yani, I mean, we do get a lot of complaints about things like this and it is hard to get teeth. But the question I have as well with these ones is that how many of these are all the same property? We don't have a picture of that. So you might have one property that's got the rubbish, the vermin. We don't have a picture of that. So you might have one property that's got the rubbish, the vermin, um the hoarding, um the flies and the nuisance and the and the fire risk, and it could be one one property. So we don't know.
I mean, the team have done their best to um capture a single entity properties and categorise it with the most common complaint, but we can provide you with that detail.
We can find it if we are asked you, we could, yep.
So is it possible to get the trends but to also get the geographic hotspots? So can we get it geospatially plotted so we can see where the?
I'll see what we can do from a reporting perspective. I don't know if that's available to us, but.
That would be helpful. Um, and the only final question I have is around the signage. I see you're gonna implement another campaign um in March. But like I've noticed a proliferation of signage and particularly concerning is illegal signage being put up blocking um views of motorists where children are crossing uh outside schools, on busy roads, for example. Um, is there anything else that we can do proactively, given that a lot of those signage are actually for council-funded events?
That's a consenting issue, isn't it? They have to have consent, don't they? What what sort of signs are you talking about?
So for the AMP show, for the Easter show, um and the signs go up particularly like on Linwood Ave, where you've got the little yellow crossing where kids cross and they put them up on there.
Well, do you want to take that offline, Yanni, because that's a hole?
Well, I ha- I have raised it.
Yep.
So I'm just wondering in terms of the campaign coming up in March, but also ahead of waiting for the campaign, is there anything that you're doing, you know, you you've thought about doing with like event um operators to try and get better complaints?
Something that you can, if councillor Johansson's got a lot of detailed questions like that, we could actually arrange to drop in for him to go through.
Well, staff are well aware of it, but it just keeps happening.
Especially when I've just been asked for guidance, someone will finish. Um, so, do you have any other questions? You're happy to move it. Councillor Barber's moved it. Councillor Templeton's seconded it. Um, thank you staff for the work on this and we'll look forward to the um perhaps some trends in the next one would be helpful.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye? Opposed, that's carried. Thank you. Item twenty-four. Is this um the Fenderton Library, this? Oh, this is an Fenderton Library? Uh, or or, oh no, that's council. That's the one.
Oh, it is too. I just test downstairs to go past it every day.
Welcome, Sarah.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, councillors, deputy mayor. Um, so you've got in front of you, or you've had, uh a the Citizen and Customer Services Unit report. It is, because it was delayed, coming to you, you'll see, it's from April to September. And obviously the world's moved on a wee bit since then. Just in relation to levels of service performance, they're all still green. Uh, we're still all on all on track and and particularly um a lot of great work's been done in our resourcing and planning for our phone channel. Uh, and currently, uh it's sitting at year-to-date eighty-eight seconds. You can expect to wait to get a call answered with a target of a hundred and twenty, which I think is pretty impressive anyway. So, um perhaps what might be best, if you've got questions, um you'll see some key highlights in there. You'll see that still the wonderful customer services team do an outstanding job in representing our organisation uh in the work that this council does. So I always like to make sure, remind you about that wonderful work they do.
Hmm, with the national award.
Yes, yes.
Councillor Johansson? Oh, hang on, sorry, I'm sorry, the councillor Moore, you were first, question, then councillor Johansson.
So a question, if if you haven't said the answer, one um bit of feedback you often get is when people send a service request and they get the automated response saying it's been resolved. And it's like, well, hold on, there is still a.
Yep, yeah. So there is confusion around when people use SnapSenseOf, which is a third-party app, and when they actually engage with council through our hybrid system.
Yeah.
There is work that we are doing. You'll recall the DCE, Digital Citizen Experience Programme. The first cab off the rank that we're working on is around rates, uh enabling better information online for our customers in that space. And then we're moving to service request, where we will look at, because what happens is you send something via SnapSenseOf and you get their notification. You then have to actually opt in to get councils' notifications. That causes confusion and we want to alleviate that.
Cool. Thank you.
Councillor Johansson?
Uh, yeah, I mean, um, yeah, congrats on the award and obviously the the customer service team does a really great, great job. Um, I was just interested particularly in the whole relationship with NZ Post. Um, and I I think it's wonderful what you've been doing in that space with the New Zealand Post Plus sites. But what I was really trying to understand is, is there a way that we, is is there kind of a strategic relationship that we have with NZ Post around things like hours of operation? So we can have like a standard um hours of operation around service for customers? And I guess, you know, the obvious one is is like in Eastgate, for example, the post shop used to be there, used to be open during the mall hours, then it goes to the the um the the post, uh I forget what it was, the bookshop. And then it suddenly doesn't open on Sunday, then it comes to the library and then it's not opening as much as it was when I was at the previous bookshop. And I just kind of understand how we set the levels of service for the hours for those joint services with New Zealand Post and and how we understand what the need is.
Okay, so we, yes, absolutely, we have a a very good relationship with New Zealand Post. Um, uh in the in the case of Linwood, that was lining up our current business model with what we were now going to be providing with New Zealand Post, which is why we went Monday to Friday, because customer services uh staffed Monday to Friday. Having said that though, we gather a whole lot of information regularly about why customers engage with us to to monitor and 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 confirm our hours of service. Uh, interesting enough, Akeroa, with posts now going into that site, is now a really busy site, which is great. Staff enjoy being busier, um and and the community are very, very happy. So we're currently doing a review of the hours of operation, because that's ten to two, which was set up back in the day when we just provide council services. So to answer your question, yes, we do regularly look at it. There's probably not any current information to suggest that there is a need for post to be opened at Linwood on the weekends. Um, how- however, happy to go back and look and see again what that's tracking like. But if that did show that, there would be a conversation with New Zealand Post about what the contract currently provides.
Great, thank you. And um Beacon and Library, is it closed now?
Uh, so for us, it's this Friday. It does close to the public this Friday. Um, we move out this Friday and open in Pioneer on Monday.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Oh, well. It is, yeah, but change is as good as a holiday.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Sure.
Uh, Kilda, uh I locked myself out of the building last week at eleven o'clock after an event. And um this call centre, I just wanted to make a comment just in public. The call centre, absolutely phenomenal. They tried to find a solution. They didn't say, hey, sorry, um it's out of hours for security team. Um, can you come in at nine AM tomorrow? They said, we think it's gonna happen. But what I'll do is I'll call the security team to see if they'll actually be able to let you in. Apparently the guy was out ten minutes, came back in and he went home to go and get me to come back into the building. Uh, it was phenomenal stuff, amazing stuff. So my experience with the call centre and um just with just with um public facing uh whanau all across the the council board, absolutely phenomenal. I just wanted to make that comment and say thank you so much and thank the team for all that they do. It's amazing. Really, really good.
Thank you. I'm very proud of that team. And the same people that answer the phone are the same people that serve your customers face-to-face and reply to emails, which is why we have such an outstanding service.
Oh, yeah, I've 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 rung the heaps. I've never had a bad response. Um, look, should should we go into a quick debate? Um, so that if you want to make comments, is it questions?
Yeah, I just wanna um reiterate that um the amount of work that not only your staff, but the library staff and our um support team for the community board have made with the movement to um Pioneer, but also um the Colombo, et cetera, to make things happen, has been huge. And to move all those books and reset them in all your systems, et cetera. Um, I just want to do a shout out for our commu- from our communities to say thank you very much for the work that our team have done. Cheers.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right. I've I've moved and Sam's seconded, by the way.
Well, just just very quickly, I mean, I just reiterate what what Tim said. Um, Sarah mentioned Akarawa, like I think that the the effort and that that she and her team went to to get postal services back in Akarawa has had a massive, massive positive impact on on Akarawa. And it's just been a really good thing to do. So just shout out to you for that and much appreciated from the community.
Yeah, I'd also like to add the experiences I've had have been just fantastic, whether it's the phone or whatever, can't fault it. Um, and who's gonna tell councillor Harrison Hunt that we were actually practising our own one-way door policy? Anyway, okay, on that note, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. Thank you very much. Stand for the closing. That's it, isn't it? Thank you, everybody. There wasn't any p's.